Welcome to the Select Board meeting of September 9th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one announcement for tonight. The Merriweather Project is moving along. It's been a very difficult time, and I appreciate everyone's cooperation in the area. In about one week, we should be moving on to Williams Street, and that means during the day, we'll be down to one lane. So still be aware, within one, one and a half weeks, we should be moving into the Williams Street area. Are there any visitor comments for tonight? Okay, thank you. In regards to correspondence, we've received several correspondence from residents in regards to the casino and concerns about the casino coming into the area. And also, we did receive a letter of correspondence from a gentleman about green communities and encouraging bike lanes, and we are going to look at that and address that later in not tonight's session, but another session. And in regards to new business, we're going to start with the police patrol officer's tentative contract. And Mark Gold has worked very hard with the town manager in regards to this. Do you want to give us a summary?
Sure, thank you. The town and the police officers, patrol officers' union had reached a tentative agreement on a new contract that would be a four-year contract. They've actually been working for the last year plus, what, three months now on the new fiscal year? So fifteen months without an active contract. So rather than have a three-year contract as we had in the past where we'd just be back negotiating in fifteen minutes or a few weeks, we asked for and received, worked through to get a four-year contract with the patrol officers' union. That four-year contract is based on a couple of things. The Select Board had a desire to reduce the process by which that there are steps in contracts, and that is for people who, it's really a longevity, it's not a cost of living increase, it's not a merit increase, but rather, it's an increase that are built into some of our contracts as a result of just an extra year that you've worked. The old police patrol officer's contract had a step after a year of work, after two years of work, after five years of work, and after ten years of work. And during this contract, as you'll hear as I give the summary, we've gone from those four steps down to a three-step contract, and we think that's helpful to the town to better control costs, and we've given the police some benefits as well for doing this. So the contract essentially calls for the following. It calls for a 2% raise to base wages in the first year. That year was actually fiscal year 2013, which was effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. That was the first year they'd been working without a contract. And for the fiscal year 2014, which is the fiscal year that has just started, that started July 1st, there is no base wage increase, but rather, we've consolidated the steps. So we've gone from four steps, as I earlier mentioned, to three steps. There's a step after one year, a step after five years, and a step after ten years. So there is no more, no longer a two-year step. And in return for that, the five-year step has gone up a little bit for officers who have reached the five-year plateau, or five years longevity relative to what it would have been prior to that. The contract calls for year three, which is effective next coming July 1st, for a two-year wage increase in the base wages. So two-year base wage increase for, that's fiscal year 2015, from July 1st, 2014 till June 30th, 2015. And then it calls for a 0% base wage increase in fiscal year 2016, which is the fiscal year runs from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. There is also some language in the contract that allows for the police patrol officers to earn up to an additional $450 in the third and fourth year of the contract for performing extra duties as dispatcher. There's a new state law that requires police and safety dispatchers to be particularly trained. It's different from what used to go on many years ago. It requires particular training. We put the officers through that training, and it's an incentive for the officers to do up to a certain amount of hours, 24 hours, in fact it is, of extra work. On the dispatch desk, they will be paid up to a $450 incentive for those who qualify, and that's in the third year. In the fourth year of the contract, there's a lesser incentive for the first two years of the contract. And there's also, not obviously, but I would also state that there was other changes to language, language having to do with when vacation accrues, language that has to do with substance abuse issues and other issues that were both, that were requested by both the town negotiation side as well as the patrol union negotiation side, having to do with operations and enforcement of work rules. None of which were financially impactful of the town, but all of which we think, in balance, both provide benefits and clarify language for the patrol officers and provide potential benefits for the town. So I think that's the summary. The Select Board has been informed through the process of the negotiations of what's been going on. And so I think that they're fairly familiar with this, the contract, and my summary is mostly for the people at home. But at this point, I'd make a motion that we approve the tentative contract with the patrol officers' union. And I would also say that the patrol officers' union did ratify this, I believe, last Thursday evening by unanimous vote. So I think it's a good contract for the town and a good contract for the union. So I move that we approve this.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, was there any discussion?
I have a question. A good question for Stephen. I brought your attention a while back, there was an officer who doesn't participate in the educational benefit of the contract, the police contract. On election day, I don't know if you recall that. He was denied by the former town manager that his background did not qualify for the educational benefits in the police contract that are already in there that weren't part of this negotiation. His background is that very diverse, and his background actually led to the creation of the website for the police department and the maintenance of that. And I think he gets paid a little bit here and there, but not a stipend type of thing. And I like to, and I don't, I know that that wasn't part of the discussion for this contract because it wasn't brought up for an individual member, but I like to, you know, ask the board that if we approve this contract, that we direct the town manager to look into that and see whether or not that qualifies for that educational benefit, because in some cases, you might say that that background is actually more diverse and more beneficial to the town than just a criminal justice major, for example. So I think it's something that we've overlooked for a long time, and with the change, I know that our interim town manager, I had asked if he looked into that, and I never heard back on it. So it's been more than a while since this has been going on, and I just think that at least it deserves a review, especially if we're going to award this contract to the department as a whole.
Any further discussion on the contract?
Was that a motion that he was placing?
We already have a motion.
Well, we have a motion. I mean, I can offer an amendment to have, you know, have to give the town manager directive. I'd rather that we agree to that in terms of fairness for that one officer, that if we agree to it, that we ask the town manager to look into it, just let us know whether or not it meets the criteria.
I think, if I may, when we talked about his incentive, one of the things that we discussed, and I had discussed with him on separate occasions, is that because it is something that is somewhat directly related to the contract, I think we agreed not to let it, not to get in, kind of insert that discussion into, we're trying to finalize the collective bargaining agreement. And so now, hopefully, pending the outcome of the motion here, I think we'll be in a much better position to really address that with him and figure out if he does qualify, and if so, how can we accommodate for that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Marie, if I could, I'd just like, the entire contract will be posted in the town library for our voted a couple of town meetings ago, the Joe Cutie Bi-Love.
Yes. Okay, I would like to move on to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has worked very hard on a presentation they're going to make on the GFOA, which is a recommendation on a new way for us to prepare our budgets and present our budgets. But it's a little more complicated than that, and I'll look forward to the chair explaining the GFOA. And we do have a slide presentation that will go with it. So I'm going to step aside in order that the camera can see the slide presentation, and it's now your floor. Thank you very much.
Okay, perfect. So you do have the, this is Ned Stager, Chair of the Finance Committee. So you do have the slides.
Yes.
Those the ones, Ned?
Yeah.
That's it, I hope it's the right set.
No, that's not the right set.
Okay, I've got another set.
What Peter Landon had said, oh, there it is, right there.
Okay.
Just prompt me when to go through.
Thank you very much, Mark. I just reemailed it. Okay, just a couple of opening comments I'd like to make. The Finance Committee would like to thank the Select Board for this opportunity to present our idea about how to improve the budget process in the town of Long Meadow. Our committee appreciates the volunteer service that the current and past Select Board and School Committee provide. Our committee is a voluntary advisory body. We believe that we have a unique view about the budget, town operations, and communication. In our annual budget message, we outlined our mission, observations, and suggestions, which I will not repeat this evening, but urge taxpayers to read. The members of our committee have significant experience with budgets and finance in general. Our committee believes strongly that our proposal this evening is the template to improve the budget process and our factor, and other factors that we will elaborate upon in our presentation. I want to personally thank all the members of our Finance Committee for the extra work that was required to perform the research, engage in discussions, and develop our conclusions. In particular, I would like to thank Peter Landon, who did a lot of research and contributed experience, insight, and wisdom. With that, we'll go to the first slide. And we're going to open it up by stating essentially, what is the purpose of a budget? The Finance Committee believes that it's a communication tool that can offer transparency. It can determine the investments, our infrastructure, education, and employees. It establishes policies to guide decision-making. We're going to implement strategies for long-term goals. We're going to measure accountability, the collection and format of data to make decisions. And we're going to improve efficiency and service by each department and the school. Essentially, we believe that a budget is much more than just the numbers on the spreadsheet by themselves. It will not tell the whole story, but it's how we collect, analyze, and make decisions with these numbers. We believe we have to reevaluate the town and the school budget process. If we go to the next slide, please? Okay. So some of our objectives, one key part of it is to improve communications. Do taxpayers actually understand our annual and multi-year goals set forth by the Select Board? Do the town departments, do they have annual and multi-year goals that make them accountable to taxpayers in the Select Board? And the School Committee, it seems that every year is kind of a showdown. What's our best process to improve communication and work together? And we also believe that we can help facilitate the leadership role of the town manager. If we flip the slide. The characteristics of our solution are to foster a culture of continuous improvement. We believe by making decisions based on data and metrics, data-driven decisions will shift the debate to the priorities and become less emotional. If we identify a process, it can help us guide as a town and the employees and the Select Board about what data to gather and how should we organize it for oversight and the decision-makers. By far, each municipality is unique, but we believe that by using a proven best practice process for the analysis issues taxpayers and volunteers, our employees will gain confidence when solutions are proposed by the Select Board. If we flip the slide. We want to, this purpose of this slide is just to illustrate that there are other leadership organization-type processes that are focused on this continuous improvement process. Just cited some examples here. Kaizen, Six Sigma, ISO 9000, the Disney Standard. And then we stepped back and we thought about, what are all the other leading cities and towns adopting? And if we flip the slide, our solution is the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA is the acronym. There's a website there, we cite, it's WWGFOA.org. It's a hundred-year organization. It's a set of national standards about how to prepare an annual budget specifically for municipal organizations. And what's also a key aspect of this, it includes the best thinking. So the budgets, if you submit a budget for a peer review process, it's like having a consultant for free. They take a look at the budget, look at what aspects may be improved by the budget. We think that there's a lot of value to be added there. It's a guide of 14 criteria of what to include in the annual budget. We believe that it's going to help all parties within town government to think about their particular department or their particular role. More importantly, we also, or as importantly, the volunteers, we always have new volunteers in our government, and it's key that we have some sort of document so that they can develop expertise quickly and move up the learning curve. Also, which we touched upon in prior slides, it's going to help taxpayers understand our budget. So here are some of the benefits listed here at the bottom. We're going to have objectives, which are shorter-term goals, goals, strategy, policies, accountability, and transparency. It's going to become an easy resource, an easy go-to resource to understand the town. It's going to include all those items. And if I flip the slide here, I just wanted to illustrate for the taxpayers a little bit about what we've already done to this point. We distributed to all Select Board members a four-page document about the GFOA. We distributed a presentation of the 14 criteria, an example of a GFOA budget, Northborough in particular, and we recommended that they take a look at the website. We had informal conversations with Select Board members so that we could solicit questions in preparation for this meeting. We met with the town manager and the Finance Director to educate them about what our ideas were and to discuss adoption. And we also submitted a six-page document of recommendations for the Select Board Annual Goal Setting Meeting. If we go to the next slide, we believe that this is a win-win for everybody. We'll have, the idea is to have departmental progress reports of annual and multi-year goals, strategies, and policies. Town residents are going to be able to follow along the status of each project. It's going to communicate the accomplishments and the multi-year forecast of what projects, along with those costs, that are going to be completed in the future. A key bullet point here is we believe that this document is going to significantly improve the communications with the taxpayers, the employees, and the key parties. We also feel as though we need to do more emphasis in town on a multi-year budget planning, and this process will guide us towards that goal. We also really want to have this solution change the culture of the town, along with the employees and our whole thought process, towards the paradigm of continuous improvement. You know, we want, eventually, we want to be able to benchmark ourselves against other leading communities within the state and across the country. If I flip the slide. This is somewhat of a repeat here, but I'm going to highlight the data-driven decision-making, which we think that eliminates some of the emotions. Transparency, I think that the taxpayer will certainly benefit from increased data and a user-friendly format. We're going to update our process to include national and best practices standards. And on a long-term goal, we want to add some trend analysis of multiple data points, as well as some, we can eventually take a look at how we're supported by the state and some comparison, what the other similar towns do. So if I flip the page, we have received some objections, but first, we want to ask really, what is there to lose? I mean, why not seek to improve the transparency for the taxpayers? The Finance Directors indicated to us that 90% of the information is already available, and we can format that to comply with the GFOA standards at no cost. The remaining information, which we, which, two aspects of the criteria we highlight, capital improvement planning and debt management policy, those have to be developed. We realize the Select Board has had discussions along those lines as well. And certain elements of the strategy by the Select Board will certainly take more than, you know, this annual budget process to put together. That'd probably take a couple of years, and of course, that will be always subject to refinement. But also, one of the messages, we think that we don't have to recreate the wheel every year. There's other towns facing the same situation, same challenges that we have, and we believe that if we adopt practices or use ideas from other successful towns, we can improve our decision-making process. The next slide, were the popular objections. None of the taxpayers will read it. What difference does it make? We believe that implementing GFOA will give the taxpayer an opportunity to become more engaged. Highly qualified residents may become volunteers. We're hoping to elevate the discussion at town meeting. We want this to become the go-to resource for what is going on in town. We want to improve the democracy with more transparent information, and we want to improve the relations with the school. And we've seen evidence of that with other towns that have adopted GFOA. If we move on to the next slide, we're reiterating our responsibility as a Finance Committee that we recommend the adoption of GFOA for the town because we believe that it's going to provide the taxpayer with relevant information for the town meeting and voting. We also believe that there's a lot to be gained by looking at other successful cities and towns. We also asked ourselves the question whether we're going through this process, when was the last time the town actually rethought how they did the budget process? And this is our opportunity to introduce a new thought paradigm to it. And again, we're emphasizing our message here to adopt a culture of continuous improvement and best management practices. The next slide is just a sample of all the towns that have already implemented GFOA. Glastonbury, Connecticut, the only reason why that answers the slide, of course, it's national, but when we had discussions with the town manager of Westboro, they highlighted that they thought that that was one of the best towns that they reviewed that have implemented GFOA. Going down the list, you'll see some schools, Springfield School System, Needham Schools, Worcester's got implemented for their schools, as well as along the city of Worcester, Shrewsbury, Swampscott, Barnstable, Salem, Marshfield, Boston, as well as city agencies. And I bolded and underlined the state of Massachusetts. At some point, I would imagine that they would want to encourage other towns who haven't adopted it to adopt GFOA. And, you know, through our research, some of the smaller towns, tiny towns, they're adopting sections of GFOA rather than the whole item. Long Meadow is certainly a town that's large enough to implement the entirety of GFOA. If we go to the next slide, we wanted to highlight some of the School Committee opportunities here. The opportunity for the School Committee is really budget leadership. Association for School Business Officers, ASBO is the acronym, is something that is also very similar to the GFA principles and criteria. It also has, highlights transparency, strategy, policies, and accountability. Mass state reporting requirements have adopted what we think, based on our research, nearly all of the ASBO criteria are in a continue, and as well as continuing to improve upon that. School Department already has all the information. School just needs to reformat, improve the existing 45-page budget that they already produced, to ensure that the same information as required by the state is disclosed in a user-friendly format. If we move to the next slide on the School Committee. We want to highlight that we're just at the beginning stages of initiating a dialogue with the School Committee. Our proposal for 2015 is that they also, that they adopt a budget with a multi-year forecast rather than just an annual budget, that they prepare an analysis of comparison on various metrics based on similar towns and schools rather than just the state average, and that they also improve the availability of the data, including the DART financial data, which is another acronym for the district analysis and data that's available, and that they include this in the budget reports and post in a user-friendly report format, which is not available now. If we move to the next slide. Our action plan is we are requesting, requesting a vote from the Select Board to adopt GFOA for the upcoming fiscal year 2015. We believe that at least 12 of the 14 criteria can be assembled immediately, based on our discussions with the Finance Director. We're also requesting that all our existing policies are reviewed to comply with the GFOA criteria. We would focus particularly on the reserve fund, debt management, capital expenditure policies. We eventually would like to submit the budget for a peer review to assess how well the town is progressing towards GFOA adoption after fiscal year 2016. That would be the 2016 budget. So if we flip slide, we have here stated a vote, obviously, subject to revision by the Select Board, but we took a stab at it. The Select Board adopts the Government Finance Officers Association for the current fiscal year budget 2015. The town manager and Finance Director are instructed to do their best effort in complying with requirements in fiscal year 2015 with the objective of adopting all the criteria by the following year. The town manager shall guide and advise the Select Board of its role to ensure adoption in a timely basis. It should be the goal of the town manager and Finance Director to submit the budget for a peer review in fiscal year 2016 to assess progress. Our last slide is our closing remarks. We're hoping for unanimous support from the Select Board, which we believe would send a communicated message to the town as well as the employees to embrace the GFOA budget process. We also believe that this would be a, set the tone as we, when you look at new hires for hiring, that we have a process, we have a standard, we have a high-quality standard that we expect all employees to embrace and continue to improve. We also believe that the support from the Select Board would assist our dialogue with the School Department and our request to improve disclosure and communication. Thank you very much. And we'll-
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And the hard work. I know there was a lot of work involved with preparing for this as well as making a decision on the GFOA. I was going to open the Select Board up for questions.
Can I start? Okay. Thank you, Ned, and I want to thank the Finance Committee for bringing this together. Thank you, Ned, and I want to thank the Finance Committee for bringing this together. I have some concerns, and I've talked to you about that, but one of the concerns is that the Select Board adopts GFOA, the school committee doesn't adopt ASBO. What's that do, since the majority of the budget, majority of the budget is on the school side of the budget? How does that help the town residents make an informed decision? And that's really a stumbling block, I think, until you have both boards agreeing to those standards. And I initially was against, you know, looking at this GFOA, partly because we had our auditors in here, and when I asked, actually, our auditor this year said, "We don't need to do anything about OPEB and GFOA." So I figured we're off the hook on all of this stuff, according to them, but, and that was completely turned around from last year, and I know you're aware of that. So my question is, what happens if the Select Board adopts this, and then the school committee does not adopt ASBO?
Well, first of all, school committee's already adopted ASBO essentially for the state criteria. All we're asking them for is to put the data in a user-friendly format, and you, as the Select Board, should request that data so you can make better decisions about how to increase funding and where funding, how to increase funding. So as you kind of look at, as we viewed it, we looked for leadership from the town, since we believe that the budget data that the school has, has already produced for the state, I mean, they're already somewhat a little bit of a leader here, because they have, we, what we think, we don't know for sure what we think, is all readily available. And they already have somewhat of a process, as mandated by the state. So we're looking for the town to be a leader and step up to adopt the GFOA, not just, just for, I guess it's, we shouldn't just think about, well, what if the town does it and the school doesn't do it? We're trying to change the culture a little bit of the continuous improvement process, and that's what this GFA process is going to lead. And for this town to adopt it, the school's going to follow, you know, it has to follow. And some of the, your thought process here is, you know, the school receives state funding, and then it receives town funding. In order to receive the town funding, you should receive certain basic minimum information in order to fund it. And that should be in a user-friendly format, and it should include all the data that's already produced for the state.
And I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying that, you know, there could be pushback, and the issue then you then have is that the majority of the budget isn't as free-flowing as, and I'm going to tell you, you know, I thought about this, and, you know, we talked about, at this board level, talked about standards in town, and, you know, setting standards, and a lot of times you sit here, and we talk about the same thing, I think at our last meeting, we talked about Groundhog Day for a couple of subjects. And the major reason why I'm going to support this is, you guys were at a joint meeting that we had for the budget, for this year's budget, and this is what was developed by the town manager. This was the document that was handed out to the, to the public. And while some school committee members may have taken an offense to it, I don't, I didn't take an offense to it, but this is not transparent, this is not understandable, this is not anything that should be, should have been distributed to any member of the public during a budget forum. And I, that, that was a letdown, and that was a letdown to the citizens, okay? And quite frankly, as a board member, that was something that we were given that evening, for example. So I think that if we set a, we set a standard, and that standard's adhered to, I think everything else starts to follow in town. So while this might not be the cure-all, it at least starts to set the tone, and you talked about the continuous improvement, and that's what we should be striving for every day, and unfortunately, we get, we get hampered by the minutia of a document like that, and forget the forest for the trees. And then, you know, six months later, you say, "Oh, shoot, why didn't we take care of that?" And I think by adopting this, this will give the board, I think it gives consistency through the whole town. And there's no more, there still can be deviations, but the deviations still have to fit into the format. And I think that's the biggest benefit that I can see for this board to adopt it, is to start to set a standard. And while it may not, if we set a goal of 2016, it's not 2016, it's 2017, then we're still headed in the right direction. And, you know, I was at your Finance Committee meeting, and I know when Paul Pasterzak was there, and a lot of this information's already there, it's just a matter of putting it into that particular format. And during the budget time, I mean, and I told you this, Congress, when I was on the Appropriations Committee, our budget book was this thick. Today, your budget book is this thick, and things didn't get easier to read, they've gotten more, more complicated. So I think this will help this board, and I would urge the board to adopt this, because I think this would help start to set a standard in the town of Long Meadow that is sorely needed for everybody to follow, be on the same roadmap and following the same plan. We can all still disagree over budget numbers, I don't think that part's going to go away. But I think that as long as we're disagreeing on the right numbers, as opposed to your numbers and my numbers, and the school committee numbers, and the Select Board numbers, and so forth, and we don't have to worry about that one-page document at a budget here, and I think the town would be in much, much better shape going forward. And as you said, there's always room for continuous improvement, so maybe some things don't work quite as well in Long Meadow as they do in the other towns, but then we might find something actually works better here than in the other towns, and I think that's up to us to say, "Okay, we need to tweak this a little bit to fit into what we're doing." But right now, I think that's what we're missing, to start down with a set of standards from the top down. And if we adopt this, I think it sets us on, at least on the right path.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Mark, did you have a question or comment?
I just had a quick comment. I have two concerns, but in general, this, Ned, you know, the presentations you've shared with us, it looks far better than what we do, the way we do it today. But my two concerns are the following. One is that, that it's a, it's a 90-degree turn, and we're the Queen Mary, and we may want to do this in 245-degree turns instead of a 90-degree turn. And by that, you know, you had indicated in your presentation, you can adapt, adopt much of it one year and finish it up the second year, and we might want to do that. And I think that leads to my second concern, and I've said this to other people in different applications, is, you know, as important as a budget preparation is, the physical display of the budget is, is not necessarily as important as the content of the budget. And I'd hate to have us keep more, spend more time, money, and effort keeping score than playing the game, spend a lot of time putting it in the right format, or more time putting it in the right format than we actually do in getting the numbers right. And so, to that end, I would like to see if we might want to have our CFO and our accounting department track the resources that it may need to do this beyond our current resources. This is different. I know we've talked to Paul, and he talks about, it's not a lot more resources, but I think it, you know, would turn into a, the state equivalent of an unfunded mandate to tell him to do this without providing resources, additional resources, if it takes more to do it. And so, I would think that we probably want to track the resources it does, it does take, and also, for almost the same reason, consider implementing this over a two-year period, so that we don't overly burden our Finance Department trying to implement this in one shot. Other than that, it is a much better process.
Can I comment on that?
And also, did you want Paul to come up and speak also to your questions?
Well, you can, but I mean, I didn't-
Sure. Well, first of all, Mark, 12 of the, what we believe, 12 of the criteria already can be completed. So we've spoken to Paul about, hey, how do we get this all in a format? Do we hire, you know, do we have a temp? Do we hire a temporary employee? Do we have an intern to help get it in that particular format? Once you have it in the format, then it's tweaking from year to year, right? And so, the most difficult part is putting together the strategy. That's the part that would probably be completed in year two. So to think about, like, some of the, you know, the smaller, less significant items, I mean, let's go ahead and press to see how much we can get done in year one, because you know that the strategy will require time from the board in order to come to a consensus on particular items. As well as the fact that, you know, putting together that capital plan, you know, you have to iron some things out there. Most of the data's already there, it's just formatting. And then, just to address your comment about, well, we'll spend too much time putting the format together. Right now, the town residents receive about a, you know, a three- or four-page budget. I mean, it's not transparent, and when you stand up in front of the Select Board, it's town, town, town meeting, you can't effectively communicate the Select Board message. I mean, when people wanted to stand up and said, "Oh, well, we're spending, we're wasting money on Maple Street, or we're spending too much money on this," they don't have a capital plan in front of them to understand all the, all that goes into it, to develop it. This document will illustrate to the residents that the town is doing the work, it is doing its best effort, it does have their best interests in mind, because they're actually going to have information that they can go to and, and read about it. So, and I think it's really important, in this time, you know, at this stage of the town, to think about how all these other organizations have already adopted best practices and a continuous improvement types of culture, and we illustrated the Six Sigma and the ISO 9000. We don't have something like that to, to help guide our town.
Thank you. Alex?
I'm supportive of this approach. I think any town residents, I don't think this was part of the presentation, but something you did present to us, and I think is part of the packet that any town resident can go to the website and look at, because you talk about the 14 criteria. To me, it's common sense itself. I mean, one of the criteria is to have a table of contents. I mean, who could be against a table of contents, right? I mean, who could be against an organizational chart? Who could be against a trend, you know, I mean, I don't think any of these criteria prescribe any particular path, it's just a way of making it transparent. And one of the things that I've noticed at town meeting is that people come there thirsting to participate, you know, and they're, they're clutching, you know, their packet, you know, they're, they're trying to figure things out, and, and it's hard, and because they don't want to just be a rubber stamp. I mean, the town meeting is the legislative body, they want to deliberate, and I don't think you can really do that unless you have this kind of information. I think whatever additional time it's going to take to put this in a way that people can read it is time well spent. I don't see any reason to delay it. I guess one, a couple of questions I do have, though, for you, is, so, the approach is fine, transparency is good, but I guess one thing that's, to sort of take this a step further, you indicated that you thought this would shift the debate to priorities and make it less emotional.
Yep.
And I think you made reference to the school committee to improve disclosure with the school, school department. I mean, I guess, I don't really see it getting less emotional, I mean, that, you know, because a priority is sort of facts and how you feel about them, you know, that's emotion. I don't think any of us could make a decision without emotion or feelings about something, but I was wondering if you could elaborate on that, and then-
Sure.
That's my first question. And then, second is, which two don't you think we can do? Because, like I said, the, these seem pretty straightforward criteria.
First of all, what we really wanted to do is kind of shift conversations more towards data-driven, right? How do we make decisions? Let's provide more data, so it's data-driven decisions, so that we aren't, so we, so we realize that if we're going to cut one program, where does that, where is that funding actually going to benefit somewhere else? That's not always necessarily transparent. And if we have to re-shift priorities, for example, if we're not going to do XYZ this particular year, but we're going to do it next year, if we have a multi-year budget with additional disclosures, then the town residents can see, "Okay, now I understand, we're going to do this this year, we're going to move this to the next year." Hasn't gone away, hasn't disappeared off the face of the earth, but it's contained in that document, and it's illustrated. Your next question was, just remind me, I didn't, I didn't-
Which two, which two?
Oh, okay.
You say 12 out of 14, which two can't we do?
It's, it's good, well, it's not that we can't do it, I think it just takes more time. Strategies, strategies of town, strategies for certain departments. What's our strategy for DPW facility, and when that is going to get, you know, built, and what kind of resources that could get to take? That would be it. And then I think that hopefully, you know, I'm not sure where this stands, but, you know, putting together a group for the capital planning, as well as the debt management policy. Peter Landy did some great research and looked at examples of other particular towns, and really having an integrated debt management policy and capital plan policy is key, as well as the reserve fund, because, you know, how are you going to use free cash? Should free cash really be designated for some of the less expensive capital planning items?
Richard, please. Some comments?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for keeping this ball rolling forward. Most people are likely unaware, you guys have been working on this for over two years. And there's been a lot of discussions on segments of this, as you formulated and zeroed in. And I shared with you before, I had, I was part of the federal government when this came into the federal government many years ago, and it was eye-opening to open up systems where everybody was on the same sheet of paper, and it did everything that you're saying it did, plus more, because it did change the culture. It changed how we felt about business, and it added a lot of cooperation, because in our case, it identified what other divisions were doing. So that we were, in this, in our town, would be other departments, or say, the schools or DPWs, that there was a much better understanding of the entire organization. So obviously, you know, I fully support this, I support it from day one. I want the transparency, plus I want the detail into the planning for future years, to where it flashes out so everybody's aware of where we're going. So I take my hat off to you guys for keeping up the ball on this, it's well-deserved, it needs to be done.
Thank you.
And thank you, you had me a continuous improvement. I think that's fabulous. Once you start measuring things, then you can start seeing whether you're improving or not, and where the money's going. I think it's a fantastic idea. I know there's going to be a lot of changes, but between transparency and starting to move the data along, it's, it's great. Thank you, and I do know that's been many years of work in bringing that forward.
Okay. Did you have a brief comment?
Yes.
Ned, thank you for your presentation, and as you alluded to, we've spoken with members of the Finance Committee about this before, and I also think that in principle, not only improving what you can do, but also improving how you tell the story about what the town is doing is very important. This is, will be coming into what will be my first budget cycle with the town of Long Meadow, and since I'm not really all that familiar with how it's done yet, it'll be all new for me, so I think Paul Pasterzak and I have spent some time talking about ways we can take elements of GFOA and fold them into our next budget process. Because, Paul, I agree with you, I think the, the format of that slide, you know, is really not, doesn't really say anything to someone who doesn't work on the budget. And I worked for the budget presentation at town meeting, even though I didn't work on preparing the budget, I did prepare the slides. Unfortunately, the, I don't think the people at town meeting could really see them with the lighting, but I really focused on making sure that the, that the slides were more approachable to someone who is the first time seeing a budget document, because I agree with Ned, I think the warrant is really inadequate for how it conveys the complexity, not only the level of complexity, but the level of deliverables that the town government and the schools provide. So I really, like I said, we've been talking about it already and trying to find ways to do this, and I can't promise that we could get the whole thing done in this fiscal year, because, like I said, we are learning. I do have some, we are starting work on our capital planning process to update the five-year plan, and I'm already visualizing ways where we can improve the presentation quality of that as well. So I embrace the principles of this.
Great.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to move to adopt Slide 17. I can read it, but it was stayed before, which is, the Select Board adopts the Government Finance Officers Association GFOA for the current fiscal year budget 2015. The town manager and Finance Director are instructed to do their best effort in complying with the requirements in fiscal year 2015, with the objective of adopting all criteria by the following year. The town manager shall guide and advise the Select Board of its role to ensure adoption in a timely basis. And then the second part, it should be the goal of the town manager and Finance Director to submit the budget for a peer review in fiscal year 2016 to assess progress.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Paul?
Ned, when you talked about ASBO and the school committee, have you guys, has the Finance Committee given a demonstra, same-
A formal presentation?
Formal presentation.
Formal presentation.
No, we've just, uh, been trying to engage in discussions.
Okay. And with this vote tonight, hopefully you can go to them with that idea to, to do that?
Yes.
Any further questions or discussions? Now, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Congratulations and thank you-
Thank you very much.
For your work. Okay, I would, uh, we have a guest tonight, um, from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Tim Brennan is here and so I'm going to skip over the first section under casinos and move down to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission presentation. Thank you very much for coming and speaking with us tonight. I think our last meeting, we had several questions on where Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is in the whole regional process. If you could give us a little background on what Pioneer Valley Planning is doing and where you are in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to do so. Um, the planning commission has been working on casino issues for five or six years now, mostly because we were asked by communities in the vicinity of Palmer, uh, which was, goes back to the first version of the legislation that Governor Patrick came out with. And in the early endeavors, it was really to try to influence the content of the legislation that was ultimately passed so that it would not ignore, uh, the impacts that would spill out from a host community, uh, and beyond. This approach, um, of trying to work with the communities together as opposed to individually, uh, became something that the Mass Gaming Commission, when it was convened, got interested in and enthusiastic about. And basically a process was framed, um, to add this as an option. The Gaming Commission actually endorsed this approach at a meeting back in March of this year. It's an option. There are several options by which communities who are surrounding, so to speak, um, can get involved in the process and access funds to provide technical assistance focused on mitigation. This is one approach. There are two other possibilities that are in the law and which there's a great deal of information on the Mass Gaming Commission's website. One is for communities to seek a grant. Doing so really is a joint venture between the affected community and the applicant, uh, the casino applicant. And there's a whole protocol for doing that forms, et cetera. So that is funding that comes out of money that is set aside by law from the original $400,000 application fee that each of the applicants submitted, uh, back, um, uh, early on in, in the calendar year. That money is available to the host community as well as surrounding communities. Third way of accessing funds, if a municipality chooses to, um, is a process of involuntarily, involuntary dispersment. Basically, the community such as Long Meadow would petition the Gaming Commission, seeking funds to get dollars for technical assistance for the issues that they're most concerned about. So those are the three methods that are available. Last month, in the case of MGM, they came to us along with their traffic consultants because the planning commission has a role in reviewing all the filings that these developers make under the state's environmental law and MIPA. And we've already had the first filing by MGM back in, in the spring of their environmental notification form. At that meeting, they articulated an interest in using the regional planning agencies for those communities around Springfield who chose to use that approach. Once again, totally up to the municipalities affected. They also changed the approach and basically said that the number one issue, and I think it's, it's true, are concerns that revolve around traffic and transportation. So they wanted to focus solely on those issues. And the other facet of this that they added was that they would work with the planning commission, but the planning commission would hire a traffic consultant so that you would be able to afford a sort of peer review. They have their traffic consultants. This consultant would be working for the planning commission and the communities that were interested to focus again explicitly on traffic and transportation issues. That meeting was in, um, mid, late August. We heard back from MGM, um, very last week. We've roughed out this approach and given them a memo, um, along these lines. We've also begun to explore what consultant firms, uh, might be available, uh, in this arrangement. And that requires this to make sure that there's no potential conflict of interest, that that traffic consultant isn't somehow involved in some other casino, whether it's in this region or, or elsewhere in, in the Commonwealth. So that roughly is where we're at. And again, those three options are still available. MGM also indicated that the timing on this is compressed. Basically it's September. This traffic and transportation analysis would really have to happen between now and the beginning of November. And why? Because this would be information that MGM would need to work with all the surrounding communities to come to an agreement with. MGM must have agreements signed and executed with surrounding communities in order to make the deadline for the final phase two application, which is December 31st. So obviously this is information that would be essential to you or the other municipalities in order to come to that agreement. So the time is really, really tight, uh, to accomplish this, um, but it can be done and it would hopefully afford the municipalities that were interested better information to make informed decisions. So I'll stop there and certainly fill any gaps that I possibly can.
Thank you. Questions? Um, let's start with, um, Paul, do you have a question to start with?
No, I, the only thing I wanted to say is that I, I, we found out, um, uh, I believe at our finance, we had our sub-finance casino subcommittee meeting that, um, the traffic study that we were hoping for isn't going to be done in a timely manner that I think would agree with us and, um, that it, that it's probably in the best interest of the town to go ahead with our own traffic study and, and just wanted to let the board, we did talk about that on Friday and, um, we have a very, that's probably the bulk of the report, so, um, but I just wanted to let everybody know that since I haven't talked to anybody.
Mark, did you have a question?
I have a couple of them. Thank you, Mr. Brennan, for showing, for coming in tonight. Couple of questions. First one is why only MGM and not Hard Rock?
Hard Rock, we have been working since the spring to visit with all the casino proponents, both Hard Rock and also Mohegan Sun. We went to Mohegan Sun with the ombudsman for the Mass Gaming Commission. Um, it was in July. I don't remember the exact date. And Hard Rock declined this, to enlist this kind of approach. And again, it's an option. That's totally within their rights.
A couple of other things. How do we know from, you know, us looking out for the best interest of the town of Long Meadow that, that each individual community will have its best interest looked at? You know, the elephant in the room here is that your biggest client is the city of Springfield. Your second biggest client is the city of West Springfield, maybe Chicopee. Long Meadow's pretty far down on the list. If we're concerned that Long Meadow gets a fair, a fair look here from the traffic, how do we know? What assurances do we know that that's, we have that that's going to take place?
I have forty-three customers, including the town of Long Meadow. Size doesn't matter to me in terms of importance. Our job is to try to serve the municipalities. But as I said earlier on, this approach was something that sort of came out of our experiences of working with the dozen-plus communities around Palmer over the last six years. That's why it sort of got shaped as another option. But you have to, as a municipality, feel comfortable with it. I feel comfortable with telling you that Long Meadow is as important to me as Springfield is.
And finally, you know, you, you acknowledged that the timing is, is compressed.
Absolutely.
It was said here at an earlier meeting of our select board that I think the words were MGM is incentivized to slow walk this and get the data as late as possible, as little as possible, as slow as possible, where our desire is to start negotiations with as much data as, as quickly as possible. Is there any way of, of accelerating this, this timeframe? And, and, you know, how can we make sure that the data is avail, you know, to wait till November first to, to get a report? Hopefully it won't be delayed to start negotiating seems awful late for me.
The deadline of November first is so that the information that you're seeking, you have in your possession as you try to negotiate an agreement. The incentive for MGM isn't to slow down. It has to make a December 31st deadline. As part of that deadline, it has to bring forward surrounding agreements with up to nine municipalities. So, um, the time crunch is as important to them as it is to the surrounding communities. But it is the timeline because there's a specific time schedule that the Mass Gaming Commission has put out. You must file your round two application by December 31st. They make their decision on picking the successful applicant among the three by April of 2014.
I guess just as a follow-up, I, I understand that, but I mean, if I was negotiating, I don't want to start long before November first is, is the earliest we could start negotiating. MGM's got to have something written and submitted by December 31st. They may walk into the MGC office on December 31st with their report, but it's going to take a couple of lawyers a while to write this thing. So I just think that, that the compression time, that's my biggest concern is that timeframe doesn't allow us sufficient time to have the traffic study, which is a, an important, although not the only part, but an important part of the, of our mitigation issues.
The idea behind this approach, um, is peer review and by that I mean using the data that MGM is compiling and has been compiling for months to try to address the concerns or to ferret out where the gaps are that don't satisfy you in Long Meadows case or East Long Meadows case or whatever it might be. So it's not like MGM or any of the casino proponents are starting now. They're well along and probably MGM by just the fact, it's the only one of the applicants that's filed under MIPA at all. They're the furthest along in terms of the data collection. There's actually a meeting, um, that's happening later on this week with Mass Department of Transportation, um, in Boston with their traffic consulting team. So I, I can't disagree with you about the compressed timeframe. It would be delightful to have six, eight, nine months, uh, but it's not available by virtue of the way the legislation is written and the timelines are set out.
Alex?
I have a few questions. On the compressed timeline, I, by the way, I was the one who talked about slow walking. I, I've been beating this drum since the beginning of Jul, uh, since the middle of July that, uh, we were behind the eight of all time-wise. And my underst, I came onto the board in June. Okay. My understanding is that there was a presentation that you were part of, or at least somebody at PVPC was part of back in March, that talked about a study. So the thing that I'm most disappointed in is that we're in a compressed timeframe. It seems completely unnecessary. We could have been starting this back in July and to hear that we still don't know what the study's going to do, when it's going to be completed, you know, and we've been pressing Steven, the town manager repeatedly about that. And he keeps saying, well, I'm talking to PVPC, I'm talking to PVPC and, and, you know, we don't get any concrete answers. Quite frankly, it would have been much more helpful had PVPC say, look, we're not doing anything. Then we wouldn't have relied on that. I feel like we've lost valuable time. I think the guidance that the Gaming Commission has given out is to start things early. So this, this compressed timeframe, I, to me, it seems completely artificially created by this reliance upon what we thought PVPC was going to do. I find it interesting that MGM, you said, has been compiling data for months. We're behind them. You know, in order to negotiate equally with the casinos, which is our goal, we need to be in as good a position, which means not just taking their data and critiquing it, but having somebody who's looking at the issue from our perspective and collecting the data and analyzing it so that we can present it to them. I feel like at this point, you know, we, you know, you're right. You're probably looking at the beginning of November. If we want to do further analysis or, or if we find defects in the study and we want to do something else, then we're in a difficult position. You know, so this, this just makes me very disappointed in what PVPC has done. It, it makes me really question the value of Long Meadow being part of this community, this commission. This is, you know, this is the, one of the biggest issues Long Meadow is going to face in many years, you know, either years in past, years to come. And for PVPC not to come through for us on this is just a real disappointment. So, you know, I don't know, maybe that's more common than a question because I don't know, my question, I, I'm kind of done with PVPC. I, I'm done relying, I, I tried to get us to sort of move beyond this approach last week. Um, we, we didn't quite have the support for it. I think the board now is done because, you know, we wanted to give you one more chance. But I, I guess what I'd like to hear and answer to, if you're inclined to answer it, is why did we wait so long? I mean, why, why weren't we on this at least by July 15th? I mean, it seems to me the last month and a half has been a complete waste of, you know, waiting for MGM to call and not moving forward on it.
Because the legislation requires that the developer of the casinos is in charge of the timeline. Again, as I was saying at the outset, these are three options, all of which the casino developer is involved in in some way, shape or form. So again, I, I can't control the schedule of the developers. This is, again, they came to us in August to indicate that they were interested in pursuing this at all in this modified version. And our answer to them on August 16th, not July, was that we would be happy to help and do this if the communities wanted to do it. So I'm sorry about your disappointment, but in this regard, it, it's not PVPC's doing in terms of the time schedule. We're in a reactive mode as much as are you and doing the best we possibly can. West Springfield hasn't even had its vote and won't have it till tomorrow. Palmer doesn't have its vote until November. So again, the time is all over the place, but the developer of the casino, whatever the host community is in charge of the schedule in, in large regard.
So in other words, so let me just follow it. So in other words, the whole notion of waiting for PVPC was really a matter of waiting for the developer-
Correct.
And to do things on their timeline.
Yes.
Which tells me that for the last month and a half, we have followed a flawed approach. We should never have been waiting for the developer. We should never have been waiting for you. We should have been charting our own course. And I think finally, we're going to do that tonight.
Richard, did you have a question?
I'm, all of my concerns have been met because you started at that end and started at this end.
I'm sorry. Next time, I'll start with that.
So I, no, I, I've enjoyed the answers all the way down. I think my, my answers have already been given.
Okay. Actually, I had a few questions. One is you commented that it was because of the legislation, you had to wait for MGM to come and decide that we're going to go for this approach and MGM decided on a modified version. What did you mean by modified?
The approach that we originally framed back in March would be to look at a comprehensive view of impacts, not simply transportation. It was MGM that proposed this very focused approach based on the meetings it was having with communities as they reported to us. And that I think it is honestly true, that traffic and transportation are the number one issue, but that is an, at the exclusion of others. Stormwater runoff, fiscal impacts on surrounding communities and, and we pointed out to them. I know I'm sounding a little bit like a broken record, but again, the legislation is written to give the developer of the casino a great deal to say about how the, the process is shaped. We cautioned them that we thought that there were impacts above and beyond transportation. We cautioned them that we thought that there were impacts above and beyond transportation, but again, they decided that they wish to cling to this very specific approach.
In fact, that's my concern. I was at that March meeting, and I think Richard and I were actually at a February meeting too, and you talked about a larger approach. And I understood there was even a health, regional health study that was already, you had begun, and-
We didn't, there is a, there's a health assessment underway, it's not our work, it's being done by a nonprofit based in Springfield.
Oh, really? And so, a lot of the problem with this is that the way the legislation's written is that the person paying for this are the casinos, and so that gives them a little bit of say in what they're paying for, is that what you're telling me? And that's why they can modify the approach?
Yes. Because the Commonwealth will not underwrite the cost of providing the technical assistance that must be paid for by the Gaming, through the Gaming Commission by the casino developer. So, whether it's funds to provide technical assistance for hosts or surrounding communities, whether it's mitigation measures that get actually integrated into the agreements, all of that have to be underwritten by the casino developer in question.
Now, when we first started this, and this board actually sat down and we created a list of concerns to look at a more comprehensive approach, and we talked about water and sewer, and I know that meeting that you held with, had a lot of the surrounding communities there, we talked about capital improvements that needed to be included. Are we ever going to be able to look at that? Is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's hands tied to continue looking at these larger regional issues? Or is, when we're talking about this traffic study, you're just talking about what MGM's paying for, but Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is still going to look at the larger pictures of drainage and everything else?
We already have, again, as I said earlier on, in the spring MGM filed its environmental notification form with the state and reviewed that, and I've shared that commentary, which is in a May letter to the town. The next step is that MGM must file a draft environmental impact report. This is a regional scale report, and I quizzed them when they were with us in August about what their timing on that was, and they indicated their target date for filing the draft environmental impact report was not until early, mid-December. So, we'll be doing that review regardless, that's a responsibility that we have and always fulfill for projects, large and small, that are captured by the MEPA process.
But if we get, we are concerned about issues like the water and sewer that's occurring in Springfield, and the improvements that are going to occur in Springfield, that right now, we're on the hook for a certain percentage of the capital improvements. Does that mean we have to sit down with Springfield? Because there's no regional approach, other than you're doing this large study, but when it comes down to the numbers game, we're going to have to go on our own, just like the nonprofits doing the health-wise, or am I off on the wrong tangent here?
Your community, like any other surrounding community, is entitled to bring up and flag whatever issues it feels is legitimate. Again, it would seem to me that that's an obvious candidate, there's something beyond traffic that still has to be part and parcel of the agreement that Long Meadow must enter into and execute with MGM. And again, before December 31st, so your agreement, along with other municipalities, are part of what they file on that December 31st deadline.
Now, when we sat down in that meeting in February, March, you also talked about things like statistics coming out of Pittsburgh Casino Regional Areas, like increase in DUIs and things like that. Would we be able to have access to that type of information?
I don't think that was from us. We've looked at some other models around the country in terms of just understanding. Again, the Massachusetts law is very, very different than other gaming laws across the country, and almost none of them speak to the issues of surrounding communities, or provide any kind of assistance, or any kind of mitigation funding whatsoever. So, our law is quite, quite different than others. And that goes back to our earliest experience where we worked with the communities around Palmer, about a dozen of them, to get surrounding communities to be addressed in a legislation, and that's one of the things that we were able to do.
I have one last question, and that is, I was interested in when DOT was going to step in and look at this, and you're saying there's a meeting coming up next week. And is that when they're going to talk, review the plans and talk about the-
Viaduct.
Viaduct, thank you. The viaduct and the possible changes occurring on 91. And can we attend or listen, or is there going to be, is that going to be televised?
It's a staff meeting of their consultant teams on traffic issues. Again, the idea here was that whatever approach, there would be interactions between the casino developer, the consultants that are engaged by the casino developer, and the municipalities, you know, that were affected. The I-91 viaduct is a separate issue in the extent that that has a number of studies that have just started, and others that have not yet started, that are looking at cost alternatives, et cetera. And that has, there's one consultant effort that's underway that's focused on getting a much more precise cost estimate to make the fix to the viaduct. There's a second piece of work that will look at some alternatives, and that is in consultant selection phase at this particular moment in time.
Well, because when I attended a DOT meeting, they said one of the things they were going to do is sit down and look at the traffic plans and then decide how this was all going to work with their plans, that, I'm not saying when that's going to occur on the viaduct. So, my question is, is it a private meeting, or is there any way of knowing what DOT's opinion is on the current-
Well, again, there is a process that the Mass Gaming Commission has formulated, where you can interact with state agencies as a municipality around what particular impacts, and the two lead agencies for the state are MassDOT for Transportation and Department of Energy Resources.
Okay.
So, that's something you can avail yourself, you access that by communicating to the Mass Gaming Commission ombudsman, John C. Emba.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. Any follow-up, Paul?
Can you describe the scope of your contract with MGM? Meaning, you're to do, the PVPC is to do a traffic study encompassing-
No. PVPC would be hiring a consultant-
Hire it, okay.
-to do peer review of all the transportation data, analysis, sketch drawings, et cetera, that the consultant firm performs. But as part of that peer review-
Can you go, can we, can I just have a, peer review of the consultant firm? Who's the consultant firm?
The consultant firm that's engaged in this particular option by us to perform that service for whatever the surrounding communities choose to avail themselves of it. But you, again, as I think has already been talked about, could choose to go your own route.
So, my follow-up question is, there's a peer review of the consultant study. It says traffic is going to be through the roof. What's the relationship since MGM is funding this, that PVPC would come to Long Meadow, for example, if it said, gee, you guys are going to get nailed traffic-wise, worse than the Big E on any given Saturday? And what's the, what would be the hope of this work being done? To come to a community like this and say, here's the data that we found, here's what we think you can mitigate with MGM? MGM has, you know, they're not Hard Rock, they don't seem to be as generous as $400,000, how much of this is actually going to be mitigated? How do you see that process unfolding?
Well, good question. First of all, Long Meadow is at the table, I'm not there for you, you're there at the table. If you're not satisfied, presumably, and the town agrees with that position, you're not going to sign the agreement that MGM needs. So, the whole idea is to get peer review, meaning they have a consulting firm, there's a consulting firm that's peer, and you're trying to use the same data sets. But if the data sets are questionable, or maybe they have gaps in them, that's what gets presumably filled, so that by the time negotiations would trigger themselves in November, you're either satisfied that there's no issue, you've got a data gap that's been fixed, or you're not satisfied, and you're going to go to the table to try to strike up an agreement, and that's going to be a key issue.
Okay.
I mean, that's the best I can-
No, no, and that's, you answered the question, that's why I was, I was just looking for what the process was of this, because we were told, you know, traffic study's been used in that generic sense of traffic study, and it seems to me, from what you just said, the traffic study's going to be done, not by PVPC, but by someone hired by MGM to do that?
Right. And then the consultant that's peer is trying to, you know, again, ground truth, is this a viable presentation of the impacts, whether they're in this community or any number of others that are in that surrounding community camp?
And when you look at that consultant that was hired in terms of the scope of the work that they're going to do, so for example, one of the comments made here, and I agree with it, is that it's not the main roads, Route 5, we know what the issues are because we have, we lived with it during the Big E, there are secondary and tertiary roads that then become affected by that. Would that type of study that the consultant's going to do, look at that, so that there's a peer review of that? Or are those questions that we have to raise before it's done, or during the peer review?
We have tried to raise those issues when we did that MEPA review last May.
Okay.
Keep in mind, though, again, our MEPA review goes into the state, the Environmental Secretary at its office. The Environmental Secretary then has to issue a certificate. They either take our comments, which oftentimes they do, or maybe they tweak them, or maybe they don't take them. So, that was our attempt to try to get some of the issues that we knew from conversations with some of your town officials onto the table.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Richard?
Yeah, go ahead, you were first.
Just to clarify, so, the consultant firm that the peer review is, consultant firm is hired by MGM?
No, it's hired by the commission in this particular option.
Okay, I understand. But you said the peer review of the work done by a consultant firm?
The consultants that are working on pulling all the data together, doing all the analysis for MGM, that will also have to be integrated in that draft environmental impact report I was alluding to earlier on.
Okay, Alex, excuse me, can you just say that one more time? Because now I've heard three things, I think I've heard three things. Who does the traffic study? Who comes up with numbers of cars? Who estimates where they come from? Who puts a number on each street and at each intersection?
The developer.
So, who hires that consultant? Who pays their bill?
MGM is the developer. MGM hires the consultants that brings forward the data on traffic, transportation, and all the other issues.
I thought that's what Alex asked, and then you said, no, it was the commission.
The commission hires the engineering firm to act as the peer reviewer and to address some of the questions that I heard just a moment ago from Mr. Santinello. You know, what is the, the peer reviewer is looking at the data sets that the developer of the casino was assembled to make as part of their draft environmental impact report of state requirement, and that either, again, satisfies your concerns, doesn't satisfy them, or perhaps finds data gaps that need to be filled in order to get answers to certain questions that haven't been brought forward.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, who is the consultant that MGM has hired?
It's a firm called TEC, it's based in Lawrence, Massachusetts.
Okay, so, what we've been hearing about with our town manager, the study that PVPC was going to do, is to hire somebody to peer review the study that's actually being done by TEC?
Correct.
Okay.
And the idea here, if I might inject, is that to try to get back to some of the concerns that were being articulated earlier.
So, so let's say TEC is measuring, is collecting data in an insufficient way. Since, I don't think TEC, since I've never heard of TEC, TEC never asked us what data we wanted to see collected. And let's say there needed to be additional data collected in order to do a sufficient peer review or study on our own, would we have time to do that under this approach?
I believe so, but I-
Could you walk us through the timetable?
Well, again, the timetable is, as I understand it, at this point in time, if any of the communities surrounding Springfield choose to use this, this is one approach MGM has indicated that it's interested in pursuing. We would hire a consultant firm to be the peer reviewer of the work that's being done for them as the casino developer. If there were gaps, those would be gaps that would have to be flagged, and the sooner the better, and those data gaps presumably filled, if they would satisfy issues in concern.
Well, I guess what I want to get is the timetable. So, when is TEC going to finish its study in order for the peer reviewer hired by PVPC to do its work?
TEC's work has been underway for months.
I understand it's underway, but when would it be complete such that the peer reviewer could begin?
Right now.
They could begin?
Yes.
TEC is done?
It's not done in the sense that, as I said a moment ago, the best answer I can give you about when they're going to file their draft environmental impact report is mid-December.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't want to press you if you don't know the answer. I mean, do you know when TEC is going to be done? If you don't know, you can just say you don't know. I mean, I don't want to ask you to tell us something-
Best I can do is to give you the answer they gave me when I asked them the question, which is, when are you going to file your draft environmental impact report? And the answer at that August 16th meeting was mid-December.
I guess what I'm getting at is, if you're the one who's going to hire this peer reviewer, I mean, when do you anticipate this peer reviewer to start work? Because you obviously can't peer review something until you have the study or the data that you're peer reviewing.
MGM has indicated for those municipalities that want to use this approach, their data will be made available immediately to start working on. But again, it's not my choice whether the-
But it's not complete? I mean, I-
It's never complete until, I guess I'm trying to answer you off the draft environmental impact report, because it's a-
So, I'm hearing December.
Yeah, but, but there's-
Okay, so, TEC is going to be done in December?
Yes, but lots of data have been collected, remember, between May, when we reviewed their first filing, and now. And we tried to, in our indication first instance, indicate where there might be gaps, we could see gaps, or, and tried to lead them to put that into their next phase of data collection.
Well, Alex, before you go on, I think Steven might be able to clarify something.
Just to clarify a quick point, and then I will yield. The traffic study, I think what Tim is trying to communicate is that the traffic study, the water sewer, it all gets submitted as a part of this draft environmental impact report, it's not split off as a separate thing. So, when you say, when's the traffic study going to be, going to be done, it's like saying, when's the chapter of a novel going to be done? Well, it'll be done when the whole novel is done, and that's the draft, does that make sense?
Okay, so, we're not going to get this study until December.
But I think what he's saying is, the author has written the chapter, it's just not gone to the publisher, you know what I mean?
All right, so, so how in the world-
Is that fair, Tim?
So, when, okay, so, if the study's not going to be done until December, when would the peer review be done? Just taking into account the data TEC's looking at, putting aside my concern about maybe we want to collect other data, when do you think the peer review would be done?
But it would need to be done to be beneficial to you by the beginning of November, because MGM is going to want to come to you and start a negot-
See, now I'm feeling, I'm feeling like we would have to engage in time travel, because if we don't get the study until December, but we have to have the peer review by the beginning of November, I'm not sure how that gets, that happens.
Because there's a huge amount of data collection analysis, and it doesn't begin and end at one point in time. It's an evolution. Lots of data were collected that we reviewed that went into the first MEPA filing. The second MEPA filing is far, far more detailed, but that work has been ongoing since last spring. All of that data is available for you to look, probe, question, argue about now, whether you be by this process that I've tried to explain, or your own process.
But it's ongoing.
Yes. And it'll be ongoing even by mid-December, because when they file that draft environmental impact report, it's going to come to us and lots of others, including you, to be reviewed. And there's a window of time for review. So, you might, again, flag more issues, even after they filed it, that have to get in front of the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, and they make a decision about, you're right, they didn't collect enough information about that intersection, or no, we're not, we don't think we're going to open that up, we're not satisfied that that's a real impact to your municipality.
Thank you. Richard, did you have a question?
Yeah, we've got the perfect storm generating, because September 10th is the vote in West Springfield.
Tomorrow.
What is, what's your approach on West Springfield?
There isn't any, because as I explained early on, we met with West Springfield in late July with Hard Rock, and they decided that they do not wish to use this approach. and they decided that they do not wish to use this approach.
Okay, so they're not buying into a period.
Not this approach.
But what is your approach with the surrounding communities? You know, back in the March or February meeting that we had, you talked about a regional approach.
Which is driven by the casino developer who arrived in the MGM case on August 16th.
Okay, I was under the impression that, that the regional approach was being put together to be taken out of the central fund that was being submitted at the state.
For every casino applicant, there was a $400,000 non-refundable application fee.
Right.
$50,000 of the 400,000 is set aside to provide funding for technical assistance to the host community and surrounding communities.
Right.
And I gave you the three ways at the very beginning of the discussion about how those can be accessed. Grant, regional approach, or this sort of forced mandatory dispersment that can only be done by the gaming commission. And you have to petition for that measure.
But that's not the same money that you're talking about from MGM, right?
No.
Okay, what about-
Because that money already was paid to the state. When they filed the application, $400,000 was filed. I, I must caution you, though, $50,000 is not a great deal of money when you're thinking about the host community plus eight or nine more.
Okay, well, that would have been over, what was it, four? How many, how many licenses were there?
There's three active licenses in Western Massachusetts, Palmer, Springfield, and West Springfield.
Yeah, so that would have been 150,000. Has that money been expended?
No, unless some of it hasn't been accessed by the host community, I wouldn't note that.
I am getting confused.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is Steven?
I just, perhaps I can help.
Maybe you can lead me to the fore.
Yes. Well, I didn't, I wanted to, Tim, thank you for coming. And I think I did, I also have been, you know, growing concerned about the timeline because I do know it takes some time for, and I had misunderstood the traffic study. I thought that the traffic study, I thought PVPC was doing a traffic study in fulfilling that role as a part of the MEPA process. I, I didn't realize it was a peer review.
Well, again, just to be clear, this is an approach that MGM brought forward when they came to visit us on August 16th. That was the first inkling we had.
Right, and I had, and I had misunderstood what that approach is. I will say that the, the approach of, the developers are going to have to do these studies on their own for MEPA, for their draft environmental impact report. They have to do it under state law. And the approach of peer reviewing versus doing a competing study has been one that has been adopted widely, I think, by surrounding communities. I think, given our discussions about timing and everything else, we've been revisiting that, that approach. I will say, I did, I think where my concern was having your peer review of this, having PVPC's peer review land in November, and if it doesn't include certain intersections that we think are of concern in Long Meadow, which to my mind is every one of, every one of our intersections that, or streets that connects with another municipality should be a part of the study. Because Converse Street and Forest Glen, I, I understand from MGM, are going to be a part of their TEC study. But that doesn't include, you know, people coming from Enfield or East Long Meadow, passing through Art, passing through town to get to the highway to go to the casino. So that's an issue we wanted, we saw, in fact, we discussed a more comprehensive scope for Long Meadow. And so if we get this report in November, doing our own peer review or our own, you know, subsequent analysis, if we felt like the scope of work wasn't the area, the study area, really, if the study area wasn't sufficient enough, we'd want to do our own work. And now we're really up against the timeline. I did speak this afternoon with Chairman of the Gaming Commission, Stephen Crosby, about this. Because as Alex and you have gone back and forth on this, it seems like we are in a similar position as other communities. And the thought occurred to me that that is still, I don't know if you feel the same way, Tim, but I guess I'd ask you, do you feel like most communities are kind of on the same step in the process or on the same yard line, if you will?
Yes.
So if that's the case, then everybody else must be starting to feel some time pressure like we are. I mean, you know, we can't be the only ones feeling this way. And so that was the, the nature of my, of my call to the chair, to say, are they hearing about this, are they hearing about this pressure from other communities? And he said two things that were somewhat surprising. One was, he had not heard this. You know, he said he, it doesn't mean it's not out there, it's just he hadn't heard about it yet. But the other thing he said was that the December 31st is, been, I think, acknowledged by all parties as, it's a firm deadline for the application. He reaffirmed that the surrounding community agreement does not have to be completed by December 31st, that there is, I think, a window of time for continued negotiations in advance of binding arbitration. And then, of course, you have binding arbitration after that. So the window to get the deal done is actually after, can be after December 31st. I think we want to all, I think the developers and all the surrounding communities want to get this, get a reasonable deal done. The thing he did say, that the second surprising thing was, and I'm quoting here, "Don't panic about the schedule." And the reason why he said that is because if they get to December 31st and the clock has simply run out on the surrounding community's ability to get, as he said, you know, MGM's draft environmental impact report, and you know, the, the I in the EIR is impact, which is exactly everything we're talking about here. If they're the furthest ahead of anybody, and they're looking at mid-December, we can only imagine what the projected deadlines are for West Springfield. I don't know if you have a sense of that.
Well, think of Palmer, it won't vote until November 4th.
Right, and they're not gonna spend, start spending heavy money on consultancy during the EIR, the draft EIR, I would imagine, till after the, so to continue with this train of thought, if, just bear with me for another minute, is if it appears that the time is just running out for surrounding communities to adequately address impacts, measure them, which is required by the statute, and be in a position to negotiate fair and reasonably, they would extend the deadline. He did say that at a meeting, I guess, earlier this week. And he said, and I think that's probably the first time they've said that. But, okay, when he said, "Don't panic about the schedule," I, I was shocked that he said that, but I suppose he'd know.
Richard?
I have a question for you. Is it your recollection, when we had that meeting in March or May, that there was a general feeling when we left there that this was going to be a regionalized effort? And that most of this looked like at that time that it would be funded from the set-aside funds? Or did I get the wrong impression?
No, I think you got the right impression. What I'm hearing today, which actually surprises me, is how much the developer drives the bus. And the developer is the one who decided if they were gonna contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to go regionally, and to what extent that they would modify the version that we all were sitting in the room talking about a more comprehensive approach. And now I'm hearing that not only is the casino making a lot of these decisions, but also you're telling us that in the MEPA process, you advocated for us to get more streets covered, but that could very well be rejected by Boston. You said they do, they do modify those.
The Secretary of Environmental Affairs is the one that issues the certificate. They take our commentary, take it seriously. But they do not just take everything in and sign off on it. They make their decisions about what they deem reasonable. And one thing I want to come back to, if I would, if you wouldn't mind, is that the developer decides who the surrounding communities is by law, too. It's always been counterintuitive. But again, there are no laws outside of Massachusetts that directly address the interests of surrounding communities. And I think this is the balance that the legislature sort of baked into the language of the law. Will give surrounding communities standing, but will also give the developer a great deal to say about how the process unfolds.
So, Richard, the House always wins. They're making the decisions.
Yeah, how was all the studies in Palmer funded?
The studies in Palmer are, it's the same thing. Palmer has consultants that have been working on this for months, but they only brought out their host agreement about a week ago. There won't be any vote in Palmer until November 4th. I'm very worried about, just think about that timeline.
Okay, well, I understand that, that does, it sounds grim. But I'm getting back to that sum of money. There was $150,000 sitting in a pot. Has that money been expended?
There's, there's $50,000 set aside related to MGM.
And 50 for Hard Rock?
50 for the host community.
Right.
And any surrounding communities.
Right.
So that money, I think I can confidently say is insufficient in order to address your issues. And that's why this was one of the approaches that was sort of put together as a means to try to come at it more comprehensively in terms of all the subject matter, but also a more robust budget, obviously.
Let me just, this is, the, the funding and the availability of funds, involuntary dispersments versus requesting funds from the casinos, which other towns have done, that really is a, a discussion that can be held until the discussion about retaining council. I think it just, so let's, let's hold off on that till the next thing.
We've held him a long time. Is there a specific question for him?
So I guess the, the sort of thing that I'm gathering from this is, I think we have been under the impression that PVPC was some sort of advocate on our behalf. But I think that's fundamentally not the case. Because your role is, in this process, is simply to wait for a developer to come to you. If they don't come to you, you don't do anything, right?
No, I think you're missing one part that I've already gone over. And that is, I've already been your advocate under MEPA. Nobody paid me for that. No one's gonna pay me to do the MEPA review of the draft environmental impact statement. That's where I'm your advocate regardless. And you can look at my letter. If you don't think we're an advocate, I would recommend you take a look at the letter that we filed in May. When we had fairly modest data, because it was the early stage, much more data is in the draft environmental impact report filing. That's why getting access to that by however means you choose, sooner than later, is to your advantage.
The final thing I'll say on this, just in defense of Tim, is that they did push the secretary to have a much broader scope for the traffic study. And at the state level, the Secretary of Environmental Affairs broadened it from what MGM had proposed, but not to the extent that PVPC had proposed. So they, I will affirm Tim's statement there.
Well, did you have a question?
You're cut off.
Back in August, we got this document from our Act and Town Manager. And it was, it's a PVPC Community Impact Checklist.
Yes.
And we were told at that time, our Act and Town Manager and our Chair of our planning board, we're gonna sit down and put a lot of this stuff together. And I'm assuming you guys are gathering it, that data.
No, that was put together-
For our benefit?
For the benefit of any and all budding communities, whether you're talking West Springfield. It was to try to help them begin to think about the questions and to pull together their data as they sort of tried to figure out what the impacts were gonna be.
And then there was a, there was a meeting that we had back in March with our council. And, and part of that in a memo that he talked about having a conversation with you, that what PVPC was trying to do is talk to the surrounding communities to see what their concerns were and, and that type of thing, so that we could act together in terms of, with the casinos, okay? Has there been a concerted effort to find out the impacts that the other communities or surroundings, that are classified as surrounding communities, to see if they're similar to what we're thinking or what we believe? Or is that, and that was a memo from our town attorney in a conversation that he had with you.
The only information that we've been able to access thus far in the way of casino developers is MGM's because of that filing. The data for Palmer has been promised, but again, they only reached the host agreement last week. And Hard Rock, as I indicated during the course of the meeting, has decided to go a different direction.
Okay.
I'll still have to do the MEPA reviews in all three cases, however.
Thank you very much for coming and spending time with us in this very difficult process.
Sorry it was so confusing, but that's the nature of this particular-
Okay, thank you again.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Tim.
Do we want to go back to hiring counsel?
Mm-hmm.
Did you want to make the presentation or?
I would invite Town Council Martel to come join us and help guide the select board in the review of proposals.
Good evening, everybody. I have looked at the proposals. And I don't know how you want to receive any input from me. I do have a few basic principles, let's call them, that I think the select board will want to bring to bear in making its decision on who you want to retain as your counsel. The first of these is, how important is it to you to have someone who's local versus someone with a firm in Boston or Hartford? I mean, is, is that important to you to have someone who doesn't need to go through all sorts of, you know, advanced planning to come out here on short notice, perhaps, to meet with you folks? And what sort of impediment would it be dealing with someone in Boston versus, there's one firm that's from Springfield. Hartford, Hartford is not so bad. That's, that's something I think you need to come to terms with. The second thing is, how important is cost to you? There's a wide range of hourly rates and not to exceed numbers. And, and these proposals, there's, there's one that would be at no cost to the town. The firm has said that it would be willing to ride with whatever it can get in casino mitigation money from the applicant. Another point is, how important is it to you that your counsel have previous actual hands-on casino-related legal experience of the sort that you will be looking for with this person or firm that you hire? And contrast that, maybe perhaps the absence of that kind of hands-on experience relating directly to casino, with hands-on experience in dealing with the impacts of any kind of a major development project? Whether it's a, a regional wastewater facility, whether it's a huge commercial development where impacts to the municipality where it's gonna be located would be important. And then another point is, how, how important is, is it to you that the person or the firm that you hire be working exclusively for Long Meadow? Some of these firms that have shown an interest may very well be contacting other towns impacted by Springfield, looking for the assignment. And I think you need to decide, is that something that you like or don't like? I mean, there may be efficiencies and efficiencies involved. For an attorney who is representing two towns where a lot of the issues might be the same as, as Long Meadows, versus someone whose entire focus would be getting on the best deal for Long Meadow. So I think as you, as you decide where you're going to, which firm you're gonna hire, I think those are some general principles that, that come to bear.
I think we've reviewed some of these issues before, so everything you're saying is not unfamiliar. And of course, most of the answer is yes to all of them. And so we were hoping that you would both, you and Steven, would come together with some recommendations. And I'm sure everyone here has some feelings.
Steven and I consulted earlier today. And we're in agreement on which three of the five we feel you would want to give further consideration to.
Okay.
And do you want me to open the envelope?
No, yes, please.
Those would be Bacon &amp; Wilson, Murphy, Hesse et al., and Panone, Lobes, Deveraux, and West.
And maybe if you could give us what you feel-
Sets them, each of those apart?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Bacon &amp; Wilson is a Springfield law firm. They have municipal law experience. I'm familiar with the clients they represent. They've represented Southwick for a long time. They've represented Munson for a long time. I'm familiar with the clients they represent. They've represented Southwick for a long time. They've represented Munson for a long time. And they're familiar with municipal law issues. They're very well-regarded. I don't know Jeffrey Fialke or either the other two attorneys who would be their point people in representing Long Meadow. I think it's, it's helpful and economic to have someone nearby who can come here, like I am tonight, with not a whole lot of notice if there's an important issue that needs to be discussed. I'm not, I'm not saying that that should rule the day, but that's something that I thought about when I put Bacon Wilson in our, my top three. They, they, they do know the territory, if you wanna put it that way. They're representing Munson in terms of the impact of the, potential impact of the casino in Palmer. And they represent Agawam and its dealings on the impact of the proposed Hard Rock Casino in West Springfield. Their hourly rate is two seventy an hour, which is in the mid-range. Their not to exceed number is seventy-five hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the lowest, lowest not to exceed number of the, of all the applicants.
Right.
Richard?
Yeah, I have one question. That, that not to exceed number, that, you know, as I read through the proposals, that seemed like it was very open-ended.
Theirs?
Yeah, I mean, all of the not to exceed, that was just, that was just pretty much a reference.
I think some of them might be a little softer than others. The Bacon and Wilson, one said, "Our range of fees could be between seventy-five hundred and twenty-five thousand" based largely on whether Long Meadow was identified as a surrounding community so that the appeal process for surrounding community designation isn't necessary.
Yeah, but once you go into your appeal and all that, it, it, it just goes to different rates, every proposal. So I, I figured that those fees, the hourly rate was one that I could attach myself pretty directly to, but the other ones seemed to be a guesstimate on what they felt it would cost.
Quite honestly, I thought the Bacon and Wilson not to exceed number was a hard number.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I gather that what they meant was that their fee within the range of seventy-five hundred to twenty-five thousand was going to be driven by how much work might be required to make sure that Long Meadow gets designated as a surrounding community.
I would also add that each of the not to exceed numbers do not include any necessary arbitration.
Right.
It's just negotiating the surrounding community agreement. And they all had different ways of cat, even though we asked for a fee that was inclusive of all reimbursable expenses, they all had some kind of proviso for travel. In the case of Bacon and Wilson, it was local travel, doesn't need to be reimbursed, but if they need to go to Boston to a hearing for the Mass Gaming Commission, that travel time and expense may be something that would be an add-on. So, and most of the proposals were of a similar vein.
And, and that was another point that was, you know, Dave echoing in on what you were saying on some of the considerations, says there's an equal consideration to having a firm that has multiple offices that could have representatives in Boston. So it can go both ways, to our favor and to our detriment. I mean, we could be paying for somebody going to Boston for meetings too, just as easily.
You wanna tell us about Murphy?
Yes. Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane is a, you know, well-established, highly regarded municipal practice firm in Massachusetts. They're Boston slash Quincy-based. They do have an office in downtown Springfield. Quite honestly, I, I don't know how it's staffed, or I don't know how often somebody's there. I don't know whether that office would really be a realistic, meaningful feature for them as far as the town of Long Meadow goes. They do say that Donald Graham is a Long Meadow resident, which tried to, you know, which gives them somewhat of a local connection, but he's not on the team that they've been holding out. The two people who would be on the team, particularly Michael Lehane, is a well-established municipal attorney. He's been in practice for forty-plus years. I found that their response was, was extremely thorough, followed all their requirements of the RFQ. I thought it was a very strong proposal in terms of establishing the tasks and the timelines. On the negative side, they, they only have limited direct hands-on casino experience. They were involved in the early stages of representing the city of Danvers when it looked like there was a slots poller that might go in down there. But I think that they also bring to the table substantial experience advising towns on non-casino development projects and the impacts on traffic and infrastructure that those projects create. They did not give us a blended rate. They said the rate would be two twenty-five an hour to two seventy-five an hour, depending on the level of attorney who was involved, associate or partner. They said that their not to exceed number was seventy-five thousand dollars, but that assumed that they would not be called on to spend more than three hundred hours. As I sized it up, they've got basically four months of work ahead of them. And seventy-five thousand dollars at two fifty an hour, if you use that for the math, comes out to three hundred hours. That's about twenty hours a week for four months. I mean, that to me seems like a lot of work, so I, I questioned whether they would ever hit the seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, as Stephen indicated, that did not include, the seventy-five thousand dollars did not include disbursements specifically mileage, which they would bill if they had to come out here from Boston.
Does that, um, disbursement, I mean, as you know, mileage is nothing, you know, it's attorney time for the drivers. So, I, I guess I've heard a couple of, is, when you hear travel time, are you thinking their hourly rate while they're driving, or is it the mileage?
To me, it's the mileage. I can't imagine they're not gonna charge you for their time while they're in the car.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But it's also
So dispersments isn't really a big issue?
Well, I mean
I mean, it's really the attorney time.
No, I mean, I don't think, I can't think of there's any filing fees, any kind of big out-of-pocket disbursements. But, you know, you go, it was, we asked that they give an all-in number, and I think that's the point.
That's the easiest way for apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, and the last one is Penone?
Panone, Lopes, Deveraux, and West. Again, with, with these folks, I really don't know anything about them. One of their lawyers is a gentleman named Steve Torres. I worked with him a little bit when I was Special Counsel to the City of Taunton, and he was their city solicitor. It looks to me like the Panone firm was formed when a number of lawyers left another big firm down in Boston. But they do bring to the table a wide range of public sector and private practice. I mean, there's a, there's a, the former mayor of Gloucester is in, is a member of the firm. Other people who have been in the public sector who are now in private practice are there. They, they do have actual gaming experience. They now represent the city of Winthrop in dealing with the surrounding community agreement for a casino down there. They were involved in the early stages of Fall River, of representing Fall River when it looked like a casino might go down there. And they've been involved in dealing with an Araganza tribe down in Rhode Island. So, the distinctive feature for these folks is that they say that they're, would bill at two forty-five an hour a blended rate with a not to exceed number of fifty thousand dollars. But they're saying that there would be, regardless of what their bill was, there would be no cost to the town. They're entirely prepared to rely on whatever legal fees they can recoup for their services to the town under the gaming legislation. Because as you've been hearing, at least fifty thousand dollars of the four hundred thousand dollar fee that was paid by MGM is to be made available to the municipalities who are impacted with the potential to get more money by applying to the Gaming Commission. A couple, one, one other thing that's, I think is worth thinking about is that the Bacon and Wilson proposal, it's not clear whether they would be representing the town in dealing with both the MGM and Hard Rock to the extent that Long Meadow was treated as a surrounding community to West Springfield. It's not clear to me that they planned on looking out for our interest from both projects. Murphy, Hesse said in their proposal that they would be recommending the town for one or more casinos. The Panone firm said MGM only, so I don't know whether that was an oversight on their part or if you looked at the application, they just made the proposal on the standpoint of dealing with MGM. And those, that's my take on the
Any questions for Attorney Martell? Actually, I'm gonna start with Richard because I complained last time.
I'm at the end of the line all the time.
We'll start you in the beginning of the line.
Yeah, and I, thanks for reviewing them, Dave. I spent time looking at them today too. I'm sure they were easier for you to review than they were for me.
Not necessarily, but
Yeah, and, and you're, you're right. The, the Panone firm does have, look like a decade of experience. They're talking about his gaming attorney. So you're right, they, they have assembled quite a team. And I think their willingness to accept the, the, the tab on this shows a lot of confidence in their ability.
My courage.
They know where they're going, they know where they've been, and, and they know what they're gonna be able to get, so. I don't, I don't know if it's much courage. I mean, it's a fairly large firm too, but as I say, it demonstrated a lot of courage. My concern with Bacon Wilson is that they are, they're doing a cookie cutter. They're, they're all, I'd say they're almost overextending themselves. And I, I'm concerned, they already represent three communities on the same issue. And, and I, I would not wanna become a cookie cutter example of, of the, of the legal
I mean, I, I, I made that point right at the top.
Yeah.
That is something you need to think about. Do you want someone who's just gonna be in there for you, or do you, or is it okay if they also have other players?
Right. Well, and I was sharing with you my feelings. I, I just, so, that's my only two points. And I think, I think the, the point, the firm stands up and says, "It's not gonna cost you a penny."
You don't hear that very often.
You don't hear that too. You hear that from somebody's got a lot of confidence in their abilities.
Can we add? I think you're right to emphasize having someone local. I mean, I, I have to deal with the prospect of going to Boston and back and forth. It chews up an entire day to have a meeting out here when you're in Boston. You know, paying for travel doesn't really accomplish anything. But I guess, you know, one of the things that struck me too was how useful it would be to have other clients involved in this. I mean, to me, this PVPC demonstration we just heard is how difficult it is to get basic information. We've been, it's like we're, you know, feeling around our way in the dark, you know? I mean, the, the basic question of what is PVPC doing? We've been struggling with that for nearly two months, and we're finally getting, you know? So I, I think sort of somebody who's, who's got different clients might be able to help us in that respect. But the biggest thing for me is, I wanna talk to them a little bit. I mean
I mean, clearly, I, I'm assuming that the reason we narrowed it to three is that you're gonna take it from there and do whatever due diligence is.
I wanna get a feel for their approach, their
Their chemistry.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna be working very closely with whoever it is on a big deal.
And one of the things that I, I wanna get clear, and one of the things that I, I was impressed with, the firms could identify the particular person who's gonna work on it. I, I don't like the idea of, okay, here are ten people who may be working on it. Well, you know, that could mean you've got ten people sort of dipping their bill into that client number, and you don't know really who's working on the, the case. And I guess one thing, this is directed to the other Select Board, I'll offer this, you guys can, you know, turn it down, it won't be offended. I would be willing to act as a liaison, to call these, talk to these people personally to get a sense for it, for their approach. The advantage of doing it that way, as opposed to having them come in and speak to us on camera, I think we might be able to get a little bit more of a candid discussion. Again, to the extent you guys wanna trust me with that, I, I'm making that available. I think I've got, you know, some background in, in dealing with lawyers. I used to work for a big law firm in Boston. I, I deal with other counsel all the time. I think I'm a pretty good judge of, you know, what, what kinda lawyer's gonna work with us. But again, I, however we do it, I think we should get a feel for them and talk to them, and it sounds like, Mr. Martell, you agree with that idea?
I totally agree.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm gonna give credit where credit's due. Mr. Santino is urging through this morning, I, I put together a, kind of a grid of, of, I looked at all five firms, I was, and, so I, I had, interestingly enough, some of the same categories, Dave, that you had. But one of the areas that I had that you didn't, coming off of our discussion, was their experience as negotiators, as, just in negotiations, in addition to just the casino knowledge and things like that, because they are gonna be discussing. So, turns out the same three firms came through.
Oh, good.
But I guess my question for you is, two, a couple of things. One is, can we expect exclusivity with respect to MGM? I'm, I'm less concerned if somebody's negotiating with, you know, with Hard Rock for, you know, is the town of Agawam. I'll note that Mr. Thero here is the Town Manager, Administrator of Agawam is here. But, but the, you know, I'm, I'm less concerned if somebody negotiating with, with Hard Rock for another town than I am with somebody also negotiating with MGM on behalf of a couple of different municipalities. So, can we rightfully expect exclusivity with respect to negotiating with MGM?
I mean, that's all something for you to negotiate. I mean, I know for a fact, when I talked early on with Matt Fear, is that his name? From the Panone firm, who's been very aggressive and wanted to represent Long Meadow. He told me he was, the day we talked, I think he was on his way to Ludlow. So I don't know, I don't know the extent to which these folks are, are expecting or hoping to have more than one Springfield surrounding community. But if you wanted exclusivity, if that was important to you, that's certainly something that you could, would be on the table if I were sitting where you are.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just comment, to me, I don't want somebody negotiating on behalf of two communities with one person because they might get a trade, offer a trade-off that we never hear about, and, and it would certainly concern me.
Can I just interject one point? Don't make it wrong. I mean, and this might not be, this might be lost. Attorneys have an independent duty not to operate with a conflict of interest. And an attorney that would trade off one client's interests for another client's interests would be doing something really unethical. And, and, you know, really would be upon the attorney, him or herself, to police himself, and, and I think you'd be, you'd be disbarred. I mean, am I, am I, do you agree with what I just said?
I, I, I gather that it may not be so much as a straight conflict of interest concern is that he would in, you know, serving two, two people with common interests, and would you rather have, would you rather not have that situation? I mean, assuming that even if he, they put up the Chinese wall, and he doesn't let Agawam or, you know, doesn't let Ludlow mix with Long Meadow, maybe you'd prefer to have someone who's just in there for you, even, even if an attorney, as Mr. Grant said, could, you know, keep himself, avoid divided loyalties. Even if he could avoid divided loyalties, you may, that may not be good enough for you. That's part of your decision-making.
Well, I guess then, then that leads to my next question, which is, the, you know, the, the firm that said, you know, we're gonna roll the dice and we'll work for whatever funds we can recruit from MGM. You know, to me, that's kind of akin to, if you go to buy a house and you hire a, a Realtor, the Realtor's really working for the seller because ultimately, they're, they're, they're getting a percentage of the money, the sale price of the house, whether you think you've hired them or not. And so the question is, is this person, you know, they're getting paid by MGM. Now, it may go may go through the MGC or whatever it is, and I guess, that's my personal bias, is I'd rather worry about submitting the money, we cover the bill down in Long Meadow, and then go get the money reimbursed the way we want to get the money reimbursed, as opposed to saying somebody's going to work, that's just my own comment, and bias, personal bias.
I just want a couple of points. One is on, the second one first, all the proposals, I'm sure, as you know, indicate that they would help us chase the money. So, there is, there is a possibility that MGM or MGC, through involuntary means, pays the bill at the end of the day.
And we're count, I'm personally counting on
Well, right.
Much of it, if not all.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a somewhat, Panone's thing is a somewhat clever way to give them an edge over other firms. They also were just retained by the city of Pittsburgh for, as a surrounding community to a slots parlor in Leamester, and I believe they've also been retained by a firm in the eastern part of the state for a full-size casino as a surrounding community there. And to me, that, that has some value, working with a surrounding community. I think my concern, as Dave alluded to, with someone representing Agawam, is going to be in a surrounding community for the Hard Rock, as we will attempt to be. And there are parts of that that are, that's one thing that cuts both ways, I think that's something, I think Dave did a really nice job laying out what the questions were, because as we sat this morning and went over these proposals, these were the questions we asked ourselves, and, you know, I think these are the issues that the select board will have to drill down into.
Thank you. Paul.
Thank you. You know, Mark, I look at it from another point of view, is that if a law firm says we're going to go to the MGC and MGM or the casino for the money...
It obviously shows me that they actually have a level of confidence and understand the system better than the other proposals that we may have gotten, that they're going to put their fee totally contingent on what MGC. I just, I think one firm sticks out. I really don't care about local representation from the standpoint of, that can't be the sole determinant factor. In your memo to us in March of 2013, that you said that Panone, as best as you could determine, there's no other law firm in Massachusetts which has developed expertise and represents surrounding communities. I think that is the only fact that we should make our determination on. The other thing is that the folks in that particular firm speak our language. They're mayors, they understand that. We don't have to explain to them when we talk about a water supply system, or our concerns about whether Bondi's Island can handle the flow. They've dealt with these issues on a day-to-day basis in their office. I really think that we have one firm that stands out far above the others, and it's not that, and quite frankly, if you're worried about another firm representing another community, you're all trying to represent other communities. You know, and if that's what we're looking for, we don't want to represent anybody else, I think our list of lawyers will be very thin to choose from at that point in time, because anybody who's in it is in it to retain clients specifically around the Commonwealth pertaining to this legislation. So, I think there's really one, one firm that stands out, and I would really like to have the, and I don't know if I should make a motion, but I'd love to have the town manager interview these guys and bring them in before us, the Panoni firm, and Panone Lopes and Deveraux, because I think they stand out, I think their message is very clear. They made a proposal back to us in March, which we weren't ready to entertain at that point in time, and actually, their fee structure back then was, I think, $20,000, and now they're saying they wouldn't even charge the town, because they're confident about where they're going to get their reimbursements from. And, you know, rather than that, we're hiring a firm or an attorney, I thought we talked about that two meetings ago, that there isn't going to be a single attorney that we hire that we're looking to hire a firm that has expertise in different areas. And I think what really separates these guys is that they talk our language, and they actually are the ones who have the experience in negotiating for surrounding communities all the way back to Fall River, if I believe I read that right in their, in their report.
The first iteration of the gaming law, so they were...
Way back.
...two days this long.
So, the question is, in the process, where do we want to go? Do we want to bring certain firms in front of us for the whole select board to meet, or are we going to leave this again in the hands of the town manager, and he recommends someone? Because we do have to vote on who the final firm will be.
I got a motion to make.
Does anyone feel strongly about feeling, having them come in front of the select board, rather than just in front of the town manager?
Well, again, I guess there wasn't, nobody's echoed my, frankly, I think I might be able to do a better job of interviewing an attorney than the town manager. I mean, I'm not trying, it's just, I mean, this is what I do. And I think I could get a sense of, you know, their approach, and I think we could have a candid conversation. I would like to get a sense of them, one way or the other. I think that is important.
So, you want to be able to, at one point in time, being able to interview who the final person is?
Right, and I guess what I'm suggesting is that if I, if I were to do it as the liaison, I think that might be the best approach. Again, no knock on you, Stephen, but...
Select board's call.
But, I mean, you know, that, I just, I think I could offer something to them.
Murray, you got a question on that?
Yes. Richard.
Yeah, I think it's nice that we can offer some of that expertise, but we also have counsel that we have for this purpose, along with the town manager. And I think, I'm not going to gain much from the interview process with this firm, because I've read their proposal. They've pretty well demonstrated what they've done in other areas. Their reputation, I guess, can precede themselves. I don't know how the other members feel, but I, I can't see what I can gain from it. Now, the lawyer, talking to a lawyer may be able to gain some more insight than I would gain, but for my benefit, these guys have brought us three firms, and I would be prepared to move forward with a vote tonight.
Well, without, I think that we, there was discussion about wanting to have a phone interview as a next step between one of the three, the issues. Mark.
We went through a process of interviewing people for town manager, and if I didn't learn anything, what I learned is that, you know, what you read on paper and what you get through a face-to-face, Skype-to-face, whatever it is, interview can be somewhat different. I think it's definitely worth spending the time to make a phone call to people. I'd go to the point where...
He didn't like your application. I have no idea how to take that, Mark.
You're here, so you can take it anywhere you want.
Well, exactly.
So, but the point is, the point is that I'd rather see us empower the town manager and/or the subcommittee that we formed to go out and do this, make the final hire based on having read these, reviewed these, you know, my sense is that, that, you know, although I have a preference, I don't think we'd go wrong with any of these things. I think we go into it with a, indicating a preference, and it's almost, you know, unless they come in and indicate something really off the wall in an interview, we just say, and that's how we move forward. I, and I only say that because to go through interviews and then come back to the select board is further delay, and delay that we don't want to have, and so I, but I still think we need to have a conversation.
If you want me and Stephen to be involved, or even if you're going to take Mr. Grant up on his proposal, I think you ought to get them out here. The telephone is fine, but there's something that you get by sitting across the table and asking hard questions. And particularly, when it's going to be a big case, it's a big case for them, and I don't think it's an imposition to suggest that someone drive out here from Boston for a significant potential engagement.
Let me just say, notwithstanding, I agree with what Dave is saying there, if the select board decides it wants to go that road, I mean, I know there was a timing question that we've been fixated on for a while now, which is legitimate, and we know we're waiting for the attorney to get going. And the final thing I'll say about it is, I think, I think we agree, if you threw these in a hat and pulled one out, I think Dave and I are both comfortable that any of the three firms could provide high-quality service and get us where we need to go. And that's where Dave, going through those questions at the beginning, really sharpened the focus for, what do we, how do we really distinguish three highly qualified firms that could each do the job? It really is a, for the select board, a balancing test. So, with that, I'll defer to all of you and take the next steps as advised or directed.
I'm going to start with Alex and then go to Paul.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm not sure that these are good lawyers. I mean, this is marketing, you know, materials. This is, you know, you know, this is the sort of thing, like you watch something on television. I mean, this is the, this is their pitch, you know? The only way you're going to really be able to drill down and feel comfortable with their approach and their qualifications is, as Mr. Martel was pointing out, is to talk to them, and in a free exchange. You know, the only concern I have a little bit is, doing it in front of the cameras, it may be sort of a less candid discussion, but...
I totally agree with that.
Yeah, so, but in any event, I think we need to have, we need to size these people up, as Mark points out.
Paul.
I disagree with doing, not doing it in front of the cameras, because quite frankly, had we had our first round of interviews on camera, things may have been different, may have not been different when we talked about town manager. You put them on, you put them on camera, so the citizens can see you, A, doing your job, and B, get to hear them as well. You know, when we, when we have, I guess theoretically, because I haven't been on it, I think we did interview labor counsel one time, and we retained the counsel we have now. That, I believe, was done in executive session, or maybe it was an after-executive session, an open session, I can't, I can't recall. It must have been after we came out of executive session, perhaps, with counsel. And I know we really just interviewed the folks that we, I think we had two councils that we interviewed, you were on the board, right? It was two, I think, or, yeah.
Two, from Boston.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with bringing people in, I just, I really think that, you know, and Stephen, I'll disagree with you, that if you put all three names in a hat, that you're going to come out with a firm that'll represent you well. They may, but there's one that actually has experience, and, you know, we talked about that, that we wanted a firm with experience, and there's only one that has experience. And I, rather than having three different law firms in front of us, I'd rather make a motion that the town manager, and with counsel, with help of counsel, if he feels he needs it, interview these folks and get their feel on them, and I, or bring them before the board, or have them, have them come before the board. I think we're really, you saw the resumes, I mean, I think most of us agree with, in terms of what you see on there, and quite frankly, someone else is going to have to tell me how that personal interview is going to really matter much more than what you saw. With our town manager interviews, you really saw, I think what we saw was what we, what we read on paper, what you can see is personalities, to your point, David, is that you might see those personalities that are a little bit interactive, but we asked for resumes, they're delivered, we have one that has the experience that we were demanding, not asking for, but demanding, and it's here in front of us, and we want to just wait a while and maybe we interview them over the telephone, maybe not, and I, again, I think we're spinning our wheels, if we want to bring them in, bring them in. But you're going to have another week where you're waiting for, if they can all make it, because we obviously got to accommodate them. And then you're going to come down to the decision where, you know, which one of the three is right, and then we're going to have to enter negotiations, and I know there's a proposal, I'm sure that you still got to have to sign something with them or whatever. But I guess I'm missing the point. We asked the town manager, and I thought, and I, quite frankly, I thought you, these are qualified. And I don't disagree that they're all qualified, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, that's the point.
Yeah, and I, you guys delivered, you really did. I think the top three that you recommended would have been my top three as well, if I had to whittle them down to three. So, we're there. It's, everything that we asked for is right in front of us, and now we want to just delay it a little bit longer, so...
Well, I think there's a consensus, Paul, that we don't want to delay, and we want to move along, so why don't we look at the interview process as soon as possible for you to be able to speak to? Maybe Murphy can't come out, maybe, you know, Bacon's on vacation, but see how, if you can get everyone in in a timely manner this week to be able to speak to them, and that will probably be during the day, Alex, when you're not available. So, if we have specific questions we feel are really important that we want asked, we could send the questions to the town manager.
So, are we not going to talk to these people?
No, the, right now, I guess we would, if you strongly believe you want to personally speak to them, we'll have to have a motion if we are going to go with the concept of having the town manager and Dave Martel this week, what day is today? It's Monday, right? This week, to try to narrow this down of the three.
Why would we not, since we created a casino subcommittee, have the entire casino subcommittee, which makes this technically open to anybody, sit in on these telephone calls? If Mr. Grant then wants to sit on the phone call, he's allowed to come and sit on the phone call. It's a, it's, you know, the only thing we've got to do is schedule it 48 hours in advance, you know, so that if somebody else wants to sit in and listen. Now, we don't have to let the public participate, but we can certainly run the phone call out of this room instead of out of the town manager's office.
How, how many are on that committee?
Two.
Two. Who were the two people?
Mr. Santinello and Mrs. Angelides.
Okay.
Could I make a recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
I think, this is our, this is a special meeting, so our regularly scheduled meeting is Monday.
Yes.
If people feel strongly that waiting, that inviting the three firms to the next, we'd have to make an adjustment to the chair, we'd have to adjust the agenda accordingly. If we wanted to adjust it, that would be kind of a, they get about a week's notice to be able to prepare and get here for the interview, but if we feel like in the short term, we can schedule conference calls with the subcommittee and anybody else who wants to be there, we can do that as well.
I would, I would modify that and say, you know, we create a subcommittee to go through this, do that, then invite the leading candidate to come out, or the winner, if you will, to come out here and meet his new employers, or his new clients, you know, but, you know, I think that's, it certainly changes the dynamics. I just don't want to wait till Monday and take up another two hours of meeting going through this.
Now, when we created this subcommittee, I think the idea was to facilitate communication. I think it was explicitly not to cut anybody out of the process. I mean, if the idea is the select board is hiring this counsel, seems like it would make sense for us to actually speak to them. My only idea, I mean, and maybe we could do it in executive session, the only reason why I was getting at the problem of doing it in front of cameras, because what, our discussion may lapse into negotiating strategy, or, and I don't think we need that broadcast to the casinos, that was my only point about that. But I think you do get a lot out of, you know, assessing, you know, other attorneys, I mean, because, again, I do that all, all day long, you know, you size them up, okay, do they know what they're talking about? Are they blustering? You know, and I, and I don't think you're going to find that in the paper.
First of all, let me ask, are we interested in speaking to all three firms?
My only commentary would be, is if you're going to do it, do it for the three that were recommended, because it just seems people make comments of all three. I think Alex said, "Local flavor has a benefit," so, for example, so, if that's the case, then open it up to all three, have them come in on Monday night, and let's just have at it, because the more we debate this, the more we're just, we're really diving into...
No, my concern is, I don't want to bring Murphy in if no one's interested in speaking or hearing from Murphy, because that is a, driving them all out from Boston. If everyone is interested in hearing in all three, then I want to make sure of that before we...
Do you want to take a straw vote on our preferences?
Well, straw vote, or does, is there, does everyone feel strongly about wanting to hear all three? Does anyone feel strongly about wanting to hear from all three?
I do.
You do? Okay, then that was my question. If we're interested in all three, and I guess we're moving towards bringing them?
Was that consensus?
All I need is one person hearing, saying they want to hear from all three.
Well, I do, I do, too.
That's all you do, is one?
You do, too. Yeah, two. That's it.
Well, what if I say I don't? Am I not representative, believe it or not? First of all, first of all, I've got a little bit of a problem, because obviously, you know I'm going out of town.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
So, I'm giving an opportunity to place my vote for the firm that I want, and I would have liked to have proceeded forward with this tonight. But I will go to the will of the board, I am ready to make a decision right now, but I will, I will go to the will of the board, since I will not be here when this decision is made now.
I forgot about that, yes.
There's already been a motion made, I don't think there's any support for us to pick one firm and vote on them tonight.
I don't think there's been a motion made.
Yeah, I don't think the group is ready to move forward in that direction.
Let's go down in flames, man.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to have all three brought in next Monday to be heard?
I would make that motion.
I'll take that motion.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I've made my decision.
Okay.
I think that we have a clear, experienced firm in front of us. We, I, you know, I, in all honesty, we've beaten the hell out of Stephen for the last five months on the casino, or maybe like a month.
Seems like five.
It seems like five. We asked, we asked specifically to deliver to us. He did. There's, there's no doubt about it. We asked them to bring law firms to us, he did. Now, if we want to say that we're going to learn something by talking to them, whether they're blustering, whether they're, you know, the guy's picking his nose or something during a meeting, and we don't like that, or whatever, that's fine. I, I just see what, exactly what we've identified, there's one firm that's the clear, head and shoulders winner above everybody else. Experience, firm-wide knowledge, as opposed to one particular person, they were on the cutting edge of casino, casino litigation way back before it even became a, an idea in Springfield. and they have experience from people like us. So they understand the terms that we're going to use when we talk about impact and, so we can have all three here. I just think that we have the, we have a firm in front of us that's clearly head and shoulders above the others in terms of what we are looking for.
Okay, thank you, Paul, and I know usually can, do you want to make a statement, since you will not be here next week, on the firm you prefer?
I've already made my statement on the firm I prefer. It's one that Paul has alluded to, the.
Oh, it is, okay.
Loops and West, I think they're, my feelings are they're the highest qualified, one out of the three that have been identified for some of the reasons that we spoke to as a board. I won't be here to vote, but if we were voting tonight, that would be my vote for that firm.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of bringing the three candidates forward? All those opposed?
I'll abstain since I'm not going to be here.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for the work.
Thank you.
Attorney Martin. All right, and the second part of that question was on the funding source, so most of them have basically said we can hold off on that because they are going to cover it until we hear from the casinos.
If you select Pinone, Loops, then you know the answer. If the, if you hire one of the other two firms, then the discussion will be their plan for approaching that.
Okay.
Marie, I, I think we need to just address what we plan to do, because if nothing else, we got to write a check and get reimbursement from them, which may take a while. And whether we're planning to go to the, to the Fall Town meeting, or we're planning to just go to the reserve fund, which, just to cover, I think we've got to state that upfront.
I do, we, we have, with the assistance of the CFO, we have drafted an article for Fall Town meeting warrant that will present for select board consideration when we do the articles.
Oh, great, okay.
That's fine, as long as I know that, that we've done something.
And the nature of the article will be casino mitigation and will list possible expenses, we, we're still working on the amount.
And I assume it also say, and we'll seek reimbursement from the Mass Gaming Committee.
I think it actually does say that, yes.
That's fine, as long as it's.
That's the plan, yes, I should have, I should have led with that and then said, you know, on the legal side, yes, we are doing.
That's fine. Now, I guess the question is, does everybody agree that that's the right way to go get money? I mean, there's not a whole lot of pockets that we, yeah.
There's not too much, yeah.
I mean, we have, we have a legal expenses fund that could cover the, the attorney part, but you still transfer money into it, yeah.
The first month.
I think it's clear to the citizens, if we have a warrant, that this is what the money's for. Instead of doing a transfer and then reimbursing, I think it's very, that's the transparent way to do it, so I'd rather see it at the Fall Town meeting.
Okay, I'd like to move on to traffic studies, and we were talking about hiring our own traffic consultant last time. You said you were going to speak to someone on Friday, which I know you reported to the subcommittee. And so you want to tell us about your conversation with one of the traffic consultants and especially the time period and what they're saying for us.
Sure, we did meet with a group called the Beta Group and some, as, as Tim Brennan alluded to, as, just like attorneys can have conflicts of interest, some of the engineering firms we've, I've spoken with also have conflicts. They've either worked for, they, specifically working for casinos. The group we met with is, is the only group, I, I received a list of, I think, four names from the town engineer and only one of them really panned out because of conflicts and lack of return calls and other reasons. I did receive a report, the one you sent today, from Tetra Tech, and so I'm having the town engineer follow up and find some more names to, to look at. I'm, you know, I'm comfortable, quite honestly, hiring the Beta Group, I think they could do the job. They are fulfilling the role that we want them to fulfill for us for a few other communities, their approach is, I think, exactly what we want to see. I was relieved to hear that the data from T E C is available, I know the data from Hard Rock actually completed their large traffic study we learned last week. So that data is available, the MGM data we learned tonight is available, we have some in-house data, PVPC has some. So if we retained the Beta Group, or if we gave it, one thing I should say is that we have to confirm with our purchasing department that this is exempt from procurement laws, it may not be exempt, in which case we have to issue RFP, which is about a two-week process, because we've hired traffic consultants before. I don't think that's, like I said, I don't think that'll destroy the timeline, it just adds a little bit to it. But I'm comfortable doing that, it's, and we'll, if we need an RFP, we'll get it out as soon as possible.
Okay, so.
And by the way, they, they outlined a similar, to do a full traffic study, so long as the data collection, which we know, we know the data has been collected recently, as, as long as they have access to it, they projected, you know, four to five week timeframe to be able to deliver a report.
And they'll probably be able to tell us by fairly soon in that process if the data's inadequate.
I would guess, yeah.
Mark?
I guess the question is, where are they going to, whose data are they going to use? Are they also going to be using MGM's data?
They would be used a combination of data, but that's.
A combination of data from?
Hard Rock, MGM, because it, some of the data that Hard Rock collected is the same data that would go into an MGM study. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission links it as baseline regional traffic data, we have some in-house, they may need to do some supplemental collecting of data. I mean, where, where the gaps are, I don't know.
Okay, I guess my, my second, next question that follows from that is, so how does that differ from a peer review of their data analysis? Because it's using their data, just doing a different analysis on it.
It's different analysis, different modeling, different assumptions about what improvements would need to be made, you know, I mean.
And he's mentioning different data, because they're using some of ours and we might be changing.
And they, like I said, they may, the same, it's virtually identical to the process that the consultant that PVPC will hire is going to go through, and that's, it's, it's, any town hires any traffic engineer to help them in this process, it's going to be the exact same thing. And I think that's, we're not, Long Meadow's not so unique in our situation as a surrounding community that we need, that, that a new model for doing this has to be invented, it's, it's a pretty standard thing. Like I said, they're doing it for a surrounding community, like Taunton, for the one near the, the racetrack is, is one they're working on. So they were really, they were really educating us about the modeling and what, and how they approach it.
And what's the cost that they're projecting this to be?
Around thirty thousand to do some of the analysis.
What I'm hearing, as we sit here right now, we don't know whether we have the raw data necessary to do the study that we want?
No, what I'm saying is, the data which is based on counters and things like that. Exists, has been collected, just, it's the same data set.
But do we, I mean, we don't know if it's all in the same places that we want it, right? So I want to ask you, as we sit here right now, because you said Beta Group may or may not have to collect more data.
They may have to collect more data, that's true.
So in other words, we don't know, as we sit here right now, whether we've got sufficient raw data collected.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay, so assuming we don't, what's the timeline on that?
Well, Alex, that was the first question I asked, and he said within the first, the beginning of the process, they will be able to tell if they need to be putting in more.
Right, I understand, they can tell, and if they do tell that they need more raw data, how long will that take? And how does that project out to the final report?
They haven't projected that, because we don't know. They haven't hypothesized it either, it's, they don't know until they look at the data.
And let me ask one other question, now.
Is, I, I guess, is, are you conceiving of a faster way to do it?
Let me ask a different question. Are we assuming that the raw data that was collected by the casinos was done in an objective way? So in other words, and if it wasn't done in an objective way, say, in a way that favored the casinos, we're just stuck with it?
I don't know if I communicate that.
Isn't that what the peer review is, to look at their data and see if they're jive?
Yeah, I think Tim did a nice job laying out what the peer review process is, and, and what, and what we're, what we're pushing, the, like, if it's the Beta Group, whoever our traffic engineer is, we are pushing him to go above and beyond a peer review and get additional data if needed.
What I'm getting at, is there any method to get behind the data that the casino developers are presenting to us?
I, I guess, I think, there is, I don't know what it is, because I'm not a traffic engineer. But I know that, but I know, as, just as you talked about, your process is done with attorneys, I know that this is what traffic engineers do.
Which is?
Get behind developer data when they work for the municipalities.
But we don't know how they would do that.
Like I said, I'm not a, I'm not a traffic engineer.
I mean, because I'm assuming that this data looks like, you know, it's a, the number of cars that pass by a certain point at a, right, and we're taking that as being honest and true.
Mark, did you have a comment?
First of all, Alex, I'll try to answer it, and I'm not a traffic engineer. I would expect that MGM would cite the source of their data, and I assume the source isn't, MGM sends somebody out there to count. I think their data, so they're going to cite the source from the Mass DOT or some city, so they're, you know, and, and if it's truly well-sourced data, whether they cite it or we cite it, it's the same data. The bigger problem I have is that, that nobody has data post-casino, that's all speculative data. And to me, the issue is what's the impact, isn't, here's what the data is before the casino, I think that's pretty much a given. The question is, here's what the data's going to be after the casino, and here's where it's going to come from, and here's where it's going to go. And that's totally speculative, and that doesn't require any traffic study or counts, because you can't do it, it's, it's not there. That's simply, where do people come from and, and is it going to be just a proportionate increase of current traffic that comes from everywhere, or is it going to be different targeted? And so I'm not sure what we're going to get from the Beta Group in terms of new data.
Can I, one of the things that would be helpful, I think, for everyone, because it was certainly helpful for me when I looked at it today, because, you know, a, a traffic study of this scale, you know, we looked at the one from, someone's looked at the one from Enfield, but that's not what we're talking about here, that's kind of a smaller version. Rich had circulated to me one for Milford, or a town around Milford.
Right.
That is basically what I believe a traffic study or a peer review will end up, because it was done for the town, not for the.
And did I send it to all board members? Okay, I knew, I knew I sent it to the committee members, that we had just talked about it.
So what I would encourage is.
I will send a copy to you guys tonight, I can't do it here, I don't have it on this computer.
I can, I can probably forward it from here.
Okay.
But I think, take a look, it, it's, it's a large document, but you can scroll through and see the tables and then see where they cite, where they collected information from to make their projections of, like, trips per gaming position. So if there's a thousand slot machines and five hundred seats at tables, like card tables, that's fifteen hundred gaming positions. They have assumptions for how many trips, like, daily, and it breaks it down at that level in a way that I obviously am in, unqualified to do. But you can, you know, you can approach it, if you just kind of pace yourself and read, or patiently read through it. But I would, I'll forward that and take a look at, because that is essentially what we're going to get.
I guess I'm, I'm questioning what we're going to get for thirty thousand dollars from the Beta Group in terms of new data. And other than getting the same data quicker, and what I heard from Mr. Brennan is that, to some extent, the data is available and we can say, have somebody interpret that current data, you know, or we can wait a little bit for their interpretation of the data and, and, and look at it differently, but it's very different from collecting data. I'm not sure that, that there's a lot of data collection.
And I think the question you actually brought up with Ingris, and all the ins and outs of Long Meadow, it's not going to be covered by either of the casinos. So maybe we're going to talk about another entrance from Connecticut as being important to us, and maybe Beta will identify that and then decide to start doing some counts on the weekends and evenings.
And they would do modeling on different scenarios and show that.
Yeah, you know, marking off what Mr. Gold is saying, that there is no guarantees, Mark, that it'll be any different than what Pioneer Valley comes back with. It's, it'll be a peer review and then they will take our considerations and possibly do a little extra study. But I agree with you, there, we're paying for redundancy is what we're doing, because I don't, I don't think there's going to be any real difference in it.
Paul?
Stephen, what's the, and you, you may have said this, but I think things are blurred right now, but timeline. You entered into contract with the Beta Group. How, what's the difference in timeline in terms of perceived report from them, or report? What's the time that you think we would get a report from them versus what we're going to get out of PVPC?
Couple of weeks, to be fair, honest, couple of weeks.
So, and, and I mean, that's, that's what we got to look at, is that it's a two-week differential, unless we're saying that we want a scope of work that PVPC isn't going to look at. And again, they're doing the peer review, they're not doing the traffic study, which is a little bit different than what I thought, but.
Me as well, and I apologize for conveying the wrong.
No, 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 I think we all thought that, that that's what they were doing, not just the peer review. So I think what we need to do is weigh the benefits of the thirty thousand dollars versus two weeks, and I'm the guy who said, hey, spending the money is not necessarily a bad thing, but if it's really buying us two weeks, unless the scope of work is so much more intense than what we're going to get off of the peer review, I think we need to think about that.
Well, I think it's also more than just two weeks, it's also insurance. Right now, we thought the process was under the way. We still don't know if the process will be done with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission by November first. That's what their goal is, but it might not be. And if we're talking about the scope, I think one of the things that was discussed by this board is there are a lot of areas in Long Meadow that we don't know Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's going to deal with. In fact, they even said their advocacy to pull in Converse Street and Glenn.
Congress, Forrest Glenn was in their study, they voluntarily pulled in Converse Street.
Yeah, but that, those could get kicked out by Boston. Boston, she, he said.
No, the, the Forrest Glenn was already in the, the scope you have, that, that, that thick secretary's.
Yeah.
Letter, if you look at the intersections, Forrest Glenn is in there required by the state.
Okay, but Converse isn't.
It was not, but MGM, I, and I, I, I'm pretty sure I have that in writing somewhere in the file, but they added Converse Street to the study. Most, largely because some, they have an attorney on their team who lives in Long Meadow and said that, yeah, those are like the yin and yang intersections, depending what the lights are doing, and so they voluntarily added Converse Street. I still think Dwight, Williams and Dwight, you know, I think those intersections where we already see cut-through traffic from other towns should be a part of the study, and that's where having some additional analysis and, and those may be areas of data collection. I don't know if that data was collected, or if the, the PVPC may have data that's good on that, and so it's not, I, I don't know the answers all yet.
So I think we probably need to have a vote on whether we're going to go for an independent traffic study or not.
I'd make that motion. Move that we have an independent traffic study. I'm satisfied from what Stephen's saying about the Beta Group. Like I said, a week ago, I made the same motion, I think it was probably late then. I hope we can do it this time. What I heard from PVPC was, was even worse than we had thought. And I don't think we can wait any longer.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion, if this is a summary.
Okay.
I, I, I'm just.
I, I still need to know what the difference is, PVPC's taken a study that was done by MGM and having it peer reviewed. Our concern now, and I mean, I full, I think I clearly understand what Mr. Brennan said and, and that this is a peer review of the traffic study and then those results will be presented to us, and I'm imagining all the other surrounding communities. Our traffic study is going to be a little bit more encompassing, because it'll entail a couple of more streets, for example, like Williams and Dwight, which I'm imagining, I mean, at some point, time flows down Long Meadow and, and Converse. But that aside, for the thirty thousand dollars, we're, we're either going to do this as a backup insurance policy, meaning we don't like what PVPC comes back with, with the peer review. And if our numbers end up being the same, then we spent thirty bucks, thirty thousand dollars to reinforce the decision, or the, the data that was driven by PVPC. And the only thing that I want to say is, I, I think we really need to understand, what do we want the traffic study for? Before we pay thirty thousand dollars? And, and I mean that, I think you need to drill down and find out, what is the traffic study, the data, whatever the data is. There might be a hundred more cars on William Street in any given hour, it might be ten. And so my question to the board would be, before we spend thirty thousand dollars, is we need to understand what the end game is of that traffic study. Because the traffic, you're saying, by saying that, you know, the, and I'm sure there's going to be an increase, I'm sure the MGM study shows there's an increase, whether it's for cars or not, we haven't heard, I mean, we, I think we've heard so many urban legends of the traffic study that I don't know if we understand what that is. So I think we need to understand what we want as a result of it, meaning that once we get that study in our hands and it says X, Y, Z, what are we doing with it? Where does that lead? So that's the question I have, as opposed to whether or not it's thirty thousand dollars well-spent or not.
It's an attempt, where it leads is an attempt to quantify the impact on the community, what that would cost us to mitigate.
Okay, so my, the question I have, and I'm, not just for you, Stephen, I mean for the board as well, is it, I, I assume that it's going to help us quantify the impact, in what regards? Is it the, just the natural traffic, or are we going to say that we're going to then take our, you know, our extrapolate out of that, OUIs, accidents and things like that, is that what it's going to help us do?
I think you can apply some of those metric, some of those metrics to the process, but when you turn, in terms of. but when you turn, in terms of what does it lead to, in terms of cost, it's cost to, you know, it's things like upgrade intersections, you know, change, you know, add equipment to the traffic signals to better, you know, to better detect traffic volumes and make, you know, adjust the timing accordingly, um, you know, improve signage, you know, things like that. It's, I mean, I think I've said, I think it says the subcommittee, in, in the, uh, in the box of tools to deal with traffic, there's not really a lot out there, especially with a fully-built-out town with a old, established pattern of roads. You're really talking traffic control devices, things like that. And so, if, if the additional, say our, say Forest Glen at peak is level of service D or E, and the additional traffic will drop it to level of service F, um, what would we need to do to get it back to D or better, in terms of, you know, changing timing of signal, things like that? I know that the signals we have are very old, and, uh, the, you know, we would need to replace the signals to add, you know, new, be able to do the kind of timings we're talking about to handle peak flows of traffic. And I'm not saying that that's one of the things we're gonna lead to for sure, but that's just an example of, I think, what communities would look at. They do, the traffic engineers do make recommended improvements, and you'll see that in the report I just sent you, that they do talk about some things that they would recommend doing to specific roads.
Do we have, do we have a motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion. I, I agree with the traffic study and all that, but the only thing that I'm unsure of right now is the placement of it, and we're very close to hiring our lawyer. And as I said before, I think we need to get the lawyer placed in place, and then say, okay, what do you want? And you need to put a scope of services together for the traffic study, is that correct?
I'm sure we have, but yeah, we need to try to tailor it specifically to this issue.
Okay, and you're going to be interviewing these lawyer firms when?
Next Monday.
Next Monday? My recommendation is that he get his study together and get all the, iron it out and get it all approved, because he's not sure which way he can go yet, not sure if he can go through the RFP or if he goes straight out. And that that be awarded as soon as you've got your law firm, and you can look at the law firm and ask them and say, are we going to, is this what we need to do for you right now and right of role?
Richard, I'll take that one step further. One of the questions we ought to ask the attorneys is, what's the value of the traffic, of, of an independent town financed traffic study relative to the MGM-based traffic study? And, and, 'cause my, I, I have two personal concerns. One is that, and I'll use Stephen's numbers, not even, letters, not even knowing what I'm talking about. You know, the, the issue is if, if we're traffic level D and we're gonna go to E or F, you know, i- is, is there a substantial difference between E and, and F? And, and what does it take to make that change? And maybe it doesn't matter how you interpret it. And secondly, and, and more importantly, I think, I think to me, is, in the overall mitigation discussions you're having with, with these casino providers, what portion of it is traffic? You know, 'cause if, 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 if traffic is even half, or fifty percent, or sixty percent, or, you know, whatever it is, it's not all of it. And, and for us to, to say all the mitigations in traffic, you know, means we're spending thirty thousand dollars to get a, you know, a, a traffic study that goes from maybe eighty percent, which is if, if we really don't trust MGM's study, that's only, and say it's only eighty percent complete, to getting one that's ninety percent complete, or if we trust MGM and say, we're going from ninety, we're going to ninety-five percent complete, how much more valuable is that, is it thirty thousand dollars more valuable to us in the, in the mitigation settlement? 'Cause having heard that there's only fifty thousand dollars available for all surrounding towns and the host town for spending this, we gotta assume this thirty thousand dollars isn't gonna be reimbursed by, by MGM. It's, it's our funds. And so are we gonna get an additional benefit out of this that pays off the thirty thousand dollars? The problem is, you don't know the answer to that unless you do it, and, and, so you're rolling the dice.
And I like speaking to the attorney, because the attorney's gonna know what the negotiations are really gonna be based on. And I was very concerned to hear, um, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission said that their, uh, scope was modified. They had modified, it's only traffic, and nothing else being looked at now. We know that's gonna be other serious, um, impacts, and it's not gonna be looked at through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
The only thing I'll say is, is to reaffirm, and this is where the, the process is somewhat convoluted, but the other impacts are measured through that draft environmental impact report, and they do review that, so I don't, I, I, 'cause I, I heard the same thing, and that's a choice they made, um, to really, I think, facilitate, really, the traffic study happening more quickly than it otherwise would have. But the bottom line is, as Tim mentioned at the end, they are going to basically, on behalf of all the cities and towns in their region, review the draft environmental impact report for all, we, we saw the range of studies that are required for that. They are gonna review all of that and help us through that process.
So I would support waiting to hear what the attorney has to say, while you still look into the issue of RFPs. Alex, and then Richard.
Well, we need a second on that, though. We're in discussion before it was seconded.
It was seconded, yeah.
Was it, excuse me, I didn't, I didn't know. Did you second that, Paul?
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, now the discussion can continue.
Alex?
Thank you, Richard. Bless it. I, I, I'm, I'm very disconcerted to see that, it feels like we're going backwards from where we were last week. It felt like we were gonna give the town manager one more week. What I've heard this, at this meeting, makes me even more concerned than I ever was. All I heard was a study is gonna be done in mid-December. That's what I heard. He said there's data that's available. That's the first time I've heard that. Did anybody know that before? I don't think anybody knew that. What level of data is it? Well, all we know is it's ongoing. So to delay, or to question the need to spend thirty thousand dollars is to throw your, you know, lot in with what the developer's doing. And it's clear that they're not doing, uh, what they're doing for, at our benefit. Now, there was a transcript that was circulated to us about a meeting back in June, and one of the, and, and Steve Crosby was there. And one of the things that was said at that panel discussion was to get started early. That was back in June. Here we are in September, and we're still sort of dilly-dallying on whether to collect the information. To the fact that we may have to just analyze existing data versus collect new data, we don't know that. We need to get moving on this. Now, one of the things that I said at the previous meeting is that, uh, you know, these problems, this casino issue, we own this. This is not on the town manager. We're elected. We own this problem. And anybody who gets in the way of, uh, any, uh, a, a step that would make us prepared, and if at the end of the day, we're not prepared, and we can't pursue the best interests of the town, anybody who votes against it is owning that problem. And if I'm wrong, that we've got a little bit, you know, and if, at the best-case scenario, we've got a little bit of extra time, that some people think we do, then there is no harm in that. But I don't think we're there. I think we're gonna be under the gun, because I'm telling you, the worst-case scenario for us is when MGM or Hard Rock can go before the Mass Gaming Commission, having not struck a deal with us, and can blame us because we're not ready. They said, we tried, and then we are placed in a position of a solution being forced upon us. The way that we, uh, protect our interests is to be ready, early on, so we're ready to negotiate. So at that point, they cannot even plausibly say that we are slowing things down, and that we can say that we were ready, and that all that just, that, that separates us, if anything does, is an honest disagreement about the cost of mitigation. And to me, to, to pay, put this off at any, for, I think we should've been doing this back in July, and there's no reason not to at this point. So I, I think we should do this traffic study, and, um, and if anybody wants to run the risk, I mean, it's good that we're doing a motion, because, you know, we're gonna find out what the consequences of that are.
I feel that it's totally incorrect to say that we're delaying this, and that by not voting on tonight, that we are, we are causing a serious problem in our negotiations, because he's gonna find out if the RFP we, is required. If it's not required, we've already identified, which means we're gonna be at least awake ahead in the process. Number one, number two, is if we do rush ahead with this, and we spend thirty thousand dollars, which will be almost all our mitigation money, it'll be coming out of pocket, and we have, by doing that, we've duplicated something that's already gonna be there, making it so we cannot look into other impacts and other studies that need to be happening. I think rushing will, actually could hurt our negotiation stance. And we are steps ahead, we have identified someone, we know it's within thirty days. I feel no concern in waiting five more days to make sure, after we've hiring top counsel who has experience in this, who will be able to tell us when we sit down and negotiate, what tools he needs. And for us to decide what those tools are gonna be and spend that thirty thousand dollars now, when he might need something else, I think that would be the incorrect step. So I strongly support waiting, finding out if the RFP is there, and then deciding if this is absolutely something we have to do. And then I'm willing to spend the thirty thousand and go up to a hundred if we need to, but I, I feel strongly that we should wait and see if this is exactly the right thing. We're hiring a professional, let's let him advise us on the, or her, on the right thing to do. Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I, I second it for discussion purposes, and quite frankly, after hearing our discussion about the, the attorney, I mean, I'm happy that the town manager has someone that, that he's researched and believes could do the job. I think we need to determine if it's RFP or, or not RFP, but more importantly, um, you know, we, we delayed for a week to bring the attorneys in to interview them. If we're gonna interview them and hire someone, then I really believe that if we're gonna hire someone, that we're, we're gonna need to step back and let that attorney work with the town manager, work with our subcommittee in a sense of communication-wise, and saying, here's what you need to do. And if they say we need to do a traffic study, between now and Monday, the town manager's gonna find out, is it an RFP, or can we go out there and hire him? So if, if they, if the attorney says, if those, and those are questions I think we should ask the attorney, should we be doing our own, our traffic study, here's why, and they say yes, we can pull the trigger. If they say, wait a minute, we should just really rely on that, and I don't know what their answer would be, then I think we need to take a step back. We're, we're waiting a week, but we don't even know as of tonight if we can, if the town manager can actually hire that firm, or we have to issue an RFP. If we have to issue an RFP, then it's a, a delay anyway, that we can't help because of the, the procurement laws. So I think, I think the, the best thing to do is really interview these attorneys, and I think it's a great question for them to lead off, and, you know, should we do our own, and bring them up to speed to where we are, and ask them what their thoughts are? 'Cause that'll tell you whether or not they, they know what they're talking about. And, um, I, I think that's important for us to at least give them the opportunity. And I think that's what we agreed to at our, at our, you know, we, we talked about this at, at our subcommittee meeting, which was really, the point was, we need to hire that attorney first. That's the, that's the most important piece. And then that attorney should deliver a timeline to us as to what we need. And it's, and it should be based on their experience in handling this, and also what their, what their background is, and not us overreacting. And again, you know, we didn't even define what we're looking to get out of this traffic study before we wanna issue one. And I know we talked about streetlights, or traffic lights and whatever, but there's other, other things. I, I would, I would recommend that, I would vote to, to hold off on hiring until we get an attorney.
I just want a clarification. Stephen, I believe the last meeting we had, we told you to go ahead and do an RFP if it was required, and we can always not hire. You said that we could follow through that way. Is that correct? Or was that in the subcommittee?
That was the attorneys, I think.
The attorneys, no, no, we were talking about RFP for traffic, and that would there, I think Richard had asked if there was a concern about not hiring after you file an RFP, and you said not, because we, that wouldn't be an issue with the traffic, so we could go ahead and...
Well, I, to some extent, I, I didn't know that, well, it's, what is the definition of engineering, which is an exempt service, under the procurement laws?
And so you were gonna find out about that?
And I was gonna find out about that, and I will.
Okay. So should we call the vote? Who wants to order?
Which one, on the, my original motion?
You do the amendment first.
Oh, uh, what was your amendment?
That I, I don't know how we worded it, that, uh, we worded it, Mark, you, you modified it, I had started out by saying that I believe that we should start the RFP process or validate it, and if it needs an RFP, get it going right now, and wait and talk to our attorney this, this next week, and find out if we should let this thing or, or hold it.
And Alex has to agree to the amendment, I believe, to amend his motion.
Actually...
I think you just need to second it, right? Did you second that?
I don't remember seconding. I mean, I, I, I'm convinced that's entirely seconded, a separate motion, but rather than an amendment.
Wanna make it a separate motion?
No. We can only go, have one motion on the floor.
I think that would be a reason to vote against the motion.
You gonna make it a withdrawal?
Why don't we, well, why don't we start with the first motion, on, um, whether we're going to order a traffic study right now? All those in favor?
Well, he's got a motion, if there's no second to Richard's motion, then there's no need to address it.
Did...
Did you make a mo...
She's calling the question on, on Alex's motion.
Alex's motion.
But Richard, didn't Richard make a motion?
No, no, Alex made it first.
That's why just, I thought he made a motion, okay.
So all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, Mo, uh, Richard, do you have a motion you wanna?
I have a, I'd like to place a motion for the board that we instruct the town manager to investigate if we need an RFP for the traffic study, and if so, to have the document prepared and ready to go by next Monday, when we have the interviews with the attorneys. And I, I would suggest that we take the opportunity and then interview to quiz the attorneys on the value of issuing that RFP for a traffic study, based on the information we have today.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? My question is if a, he, he can file the RFP without, um, the, we had asked you if it was engineering, if you could go ahead with it?
If one is requi-, if one is, a scope of work is really, I think, what you're asking for, and I will endeavor, I will endeavor, I need to discuss with the town engineer, obviously, and find out, we are in the middle of a project, so I, I hope to meet that deadline. I think they've hired traffic engineers at times where a scope of work is probably in existence somewhere, but we will, we'll, we set Monday as the deadline. If I need, if I need extra time, can I ask for it?
Well, if you have to go for an RFP, what, it's gotta be circulated a couple of weeks?
It's a central register in two weeks.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, there's gonna be a delay in that process, if we've gotta go that way.
Okay, was it his second?
I did.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, let's move on to, um, the, well, since we don't have voted on the traffic study yet, we'll do the funding source next time. The EIR, other studies needed. I asked everyone to review that, and is there anything else that we should be investigating or have concerns about right now in regards to impacts?
I think that's a great question for our attorneys.
Okay. The only thing that I'm not sure what's standing out there is, and it, material might already be available, and that is the capital projects that are gonna occur in water and sewer at Springfield. I know I keep coming back to that.
Maria, I, I, I don't understand your concern for that. I, 'cause when I read in the post-agreement, it was clearly that if there's capital projects needed, and oh, by the way, the EIR said, said, there's plenty of capacity, and certainly in sewer, I, they stating the, the numbers in, in the water, that MGM would bear the entire cost. It's not, it's gonna be exempt, or not exempt, but it's gonna be differentiated from the current program that requires all towns to bear the costs appropriately. So if MGM needs a million gallons of water, A, it's there, and they, it says how many gallons, and B, it clearly says that we're not gonna be liable for it. I'm more concerned about the cost of repairs to our roads and, 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 you know, litter, and, and looking at, at public safety on Interstate ninety-one, or something like that. But I think water and sewer is a, is not something we need to worry about.
So you don't see any other studies right now, or you wanna wait till the attorney, as Paul said?
I'll wait, I'll wait till the attorneys, but I, like I said, the biggest concern I, I would have is, you know, I have not seen people talk about how many additional responses we're gonna need to have from our fire department to Interstate ninety-one because of traffic accidents, because every time we go there, we pay overtime for firefighters because of traffic accidents, because every time we go there, we pay overtime for firefighters to cover our fire station while our firefighters are out on Interstate ninety-one. It's a true out-of-pocket cost to the town every time there's a, a traffic accident that requires a firefighter response on Interstate ninety-one. You can quantify it, you can estimate it, whatever it is, and you can put dollar figures on that. And that's something that, to my mind, we haven't done. I know Eric Madison has reached out to people and discussed that.
We're in, I mean, we're in process of doing that, that, you know, and to some extent, that gets built anecdotally and also off, you know, assumptions based on traffic study. But I do, if I may, on the water and sewer, it does say that, I think where, and if Mike Rabel can tell you about this, it's the transmission, the, the host agreement contemplates the site. It doesn't contemplate, to my mind, system-wide impacts. And, you know, cost to transmission lines that may need to be upgraded as a result of the, you know, the, you know, Springfield may pay for, or MGM may pay for its laterals around its site. But if transmission lines from the reservoir and other water sources need to be upgraded, that may not be something that would be on them. And if it's bigger than sixteen inches, it gets shared. And also, if they're pumping additional, need to upgrade motors, things like that, those could be passed through to the rate payers, which is all of us. And so I, I, it may be a zero impact, you may be right on that. In fact, I, I think you're right, that the Bondi's Island thing is clear, they have more than enough capacity. I just want to see in the EIR that they did study it and discover that through engineering that it is zero and we don't know that yet. That's the only, but you're right, I mean, I think it's, we talked about this, it's trying to sort out and negotiate on actual impacts, not perceived ones. And that's something we'll have to discuss with our council.
Oh, yes.
I guess one of the things that I was going to ask the town manager, I mean, I kind of feel like this, this process of how, how we're dealing with casinos is a little askew because sort of we tasked the town manager with leading this. But then our list of concerns, sort of the, sort of meta brainstorming we were doing. And, and then, you know, we're supposed to think about what types of studies. I mean, I guess, you know, I mean, I don't know, I would pose a question to the town manager. I mean, you know, I mean, what types of studies do you think we're doing? Or is that something that we haven't, you haven't thought about yet?
Well, I had thought about that a great deal. And to some extent, I was, I had, was waiting, and I know it frustrates you to hear me say the words waiting and seeing, but unfortunately, I think we've been described a situation where that is, there really is not much more to be done in, for some things than others.
Well, actually, if I might point out one thing, though. I mean, you're, we've, we've heard this repeated, that we're no further behind. Bacon, the Bacon Wilson proposal indicated that they've already been hired by the towns of Monson and Agawam. So they're clearly ahead of us in hiring council.
Sure.
So, I mean, I guess one of the things that, you know, you've stated is, well, I don't think anybody else, I mean, you know, have we asked every town to figure out exactly where they are, what kind of information they've collected?
Let's, let him answer the first question you asked him, which was what other studies are you considering?
Okay, there we go.
I, I don't know, since we've had the discussion, that you're going to believe my answer to the second question, so I will go back to the first question. And that is that I was somewhat surprised to hear the, the timeline on, on the draft EIR. I guess I thought, since, as you stated, MGM was much further ahead than everybody else on doing their study. I thought that they'd be much more closer to completion. And as the reason why we spent some time talking about that and I circulated that, you know, a couple of times, is because it's important to see that that's what the state is going to, the state has some guardianship role in all of this for the residents of the Commonwealth as well. And that is, is part of that role. And, but I think as Mark noted, we can talk, we can theorize about impacts on schools and property values and things like that, but those things are very hard to quantify, even if you had consult. You can find consultants, as I noted before, that will study that for you, but are the results going to be reliable? Much more accepted and proven methods of assessing impacts for development, whether it's as, you know, high, a shopping mall, condos, things like that, like we saw in Mayfield or in Enfield, our traffic studies, our emergency response, water and sewer demands. Those are the basics that, that everyone studies because they're the easiest to do. And so I have focused on those because those are the, those are the ones that are most common. Those are the things that are cited in all the proposals that I'm sure you saw. So there may be other studies that I'm not thinking of, but that's where having the attorney on board may say, you guys are totally missing the boat. This is something we had great success with with another client, but for the most part, all of their proposals were citing the same work that we've been looking at.
So let me just ask, one of the things that, in terms of other areas, the only thing concrete that I've seen is an email that went out by the fire chief and an email that went out by the police chief. And that struck me as a very passive way to collect information. I mean, one of, somebody I know in town, actually, her name is Michelle Steger, her husband Ted is here right now. She's actually called people down in Southern Connecticut and talked to them. And has gotten some of the fairly specific information about the impacts. It's on the website, nocasinospringfield.com. And, and I guess that's what I would be looking for is if, if, if we're going to be doing our own study in a sense of, of doing it with our own personnel, that we don't rely upon the inclination of somebody to respond to an email, but rather to directly ask them, you know, make a point. You know, look, call them up and say, look, can I have an hour of your time to talk to you about the police and fire effects, you know, in a particular town?
Actually, department heads have been doing that.
Well, they, they did that, but the select board said they wanted it in writing, hence the survey. So they have, and I will say, on fireside, on the fire side of the equation, it's tougher because most of the departments in that area are volunteer. And so it's hard, there's no professional, full-time personnel that can answer. I mean, Eric sent out a pretty comprehensive questionnaire.
Right.
So he's not getting much response. He is trying to follow up with some people, he knows down there with the different fire districts. I know the chief has had some conversations as well, but I mean, do anecdotes prove anything? Maybe, maybe not, but that's where we're starting.
Well, here, let me give you a concrete, one town has, had to go through three employees who handled the money because there was an increase in theft, embezzlement. That's not, you know, that's data, that's, those are facts. I think that's something that's useful. Selectmen, excuse me.
In what way is someone stealing money that pertinent to, whether, you're, you're, you're going to tie that to a casino right now?
No, what I'm saying is the people down there have, okay? And, and can I, can I, can I finish my sentence? The, the selectmen who, who've actually had to deal with casinos are willing to come talk to us. I mean, you know, I, I think that's something that we ought to be taking into account. And if, if you're not satisfied that, that the connections that they're seeing in their own town are not persuasive, then that's fine. But I think that's useful.
Well, I, I guess I would say this to that, and I, and I do, this tiger has really sent out, that was, that was eye-opening information. The, the thing that is, I think, a fact, but not particularly helpful, is that all of that information was also related to the state legislature. And this first-in-the-nation surrounding community structure is a direct result of the research and, and testimony. And, you know, they went through the whole legislative process and I think a lot of all that information was brought to bear. So it has been a part of the consideration of the crafting of the legislation. And the legislation itself really identifies, I think, you know, Mark alluded to it, there may be negative impacts associated with a casino, but something like that is not something we can seek to mitigate necessarily through the process set forth in the statute. And that's, you know, we can go, I can have the conversation with the town administrator, mayor, or select board members like they did. And it is alarming about the casinos in terms of formulating an opinion about the casinos. That certainly would inform me, but in terms of my role as town manager to prepare, to collect data and prepare the town to enter into negotiation for an agreement for a casino that will be in Western Massachusetts somewhere. I, I, you know, I'm focusing on, like I said, actual impacts based on the way projects are developed, are analyzed at every level. And it's, there's a lot, so I need to stay focused on that stuff. And so I'm not, I don't want to say that I'm, I'm not, I don't disagree that those are impacts. I just think that my analysis of the statute and I think others that I've seen would assess that those aren't mitigation areas.
And when you say those, what are you referring to?
Those what?
You said those are not areas, I'm not sure what those.
Like embezzlement, you know, some of, some of the really, some of the really deeply unfortunate consequences that happen to families and, you know, people who become associated with too much gambling. I mean, I know the state is spending a ton of time and energy on gambling addiction as a whole separate thing, which I, I think is an acknowledgement that gambling addiction probably will follow a casino. And so they've set up all these structures to basically bridge to those issues. And so that's, but it's clear that in the surrounding community structures of the legislation, those aren't the types of things that are, are part of the mitigation.
Well, I think that sort of brings up to our next thing, a casino forum and who.
Can I just, I think we really need to focus that, whether you're pro-casino, anti-casino, that the mitigation is to help the citizens of Long Meadow from any negative impact that a casino could bring to our town. And if, and if, we're going to look at it, and, and I saw the same report from the Stegers that, that Alex is referring to. And if you're going to tell me that three people embezzled because of a casino as opposed to the character, and that's the kind of thing we're going to talk about in the mitigation proposal, then we're off base. The mitigation should be solely focused on what are the negative impacts to this town? And again, having a lawyer, a law firm that's already handled this would probably be a great idea. But look at what's the negative impacts that could affect us and how do we get the best value for residents? Whether you're pro or anti-casino should have no impact on your mitigation process. That's a whole different issue, that's a political issue which we should take up with a forum and so forth. But this should be totally separate from what we believe in our own personal situations about whether we want to see a casino or not. These need to be for the benefit of the Long Meadow residents and it has to be kept in that perspective. And that's, that's all I want to say. And I think that you're under, the forum, that's what we need to do, I think, so that we can then also have a discussion about that as well.
And the reason I brought the forum up, and I know we probably, we're running really late tonight, is we had an interesting email, I think, was sent out to everyone that was a connection with a transcript of a previous forum that was done on the East Coast. So instead of just having a, a, letting residents come and tell us what they think, I think it would be valuable to see who else we would like to invite to this forum that could be informational, even maybe make it regional because we're discovering Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is not offering as much regional, you know, events and sharing of information as I was expecting to see. So I was waiting to hear people maybe send me some notifications on who you think should be invited to the casino forum as well as respond to the doodle poll, so we should try to get this up in October. Mark?
Yeah, I guess my, my only comments would be, I, I'd like to try to keep the forum to Long Meadow. And I say that because the, I'll pick up on what Paul said. The, the object of our moving forward is that there will be a casino in, in Western Massachusetts. It may be in Palmer, it may be in West Springfield, it may be in Springfield. And our job is to understand the concerns of the people of Long Meadow and make sure that we do our best to negotiate mitigations to those concerns to the best we can. We can, in parallel, say we don't think it should be anywhere, but that, as they say, that train's come and gone. And we can, we can oppose the casino in downtown Springfield and push for it one place or the other with perhaps minimal amount of impact. But I'd like to listen to Long Meadow, I don't want to get involved with people who may be talking about other areas. And the other, you say who should be involved, I'm wondering if this is going to be a true forum and we're going to invite representatives from the casinos, casino operators, I mean, you know, otherwise, we're going to be, we're going to have, you know, a bunch of people there talking to themselves and at best have people who are, you know, representatives or purport to, to represent or indicate for people who are in favor of the casino. And I'd rather let the casino operators themselves represent themselves if, if, if we're actually going to do this. I also think it's got to be a well-defined, defined agenda. Otherwise, we're going to be talking in circles and we're going to be there six hours. And all we're going to hear is a, is a gripe session from people talking about anecdotal things that may or may not be the case as opposed to, here's my concerns about a casino coming to Long Meadow and here's what I want the town of Long Meadow to work on our behalf to try to mitigate. And to me, that's my goal of coming out of this forum, is to find out what, what's important to the people along with them.
What about someone from the Casino Commission, or Obus Budman, John Ziemba, or Pioneer Valley Planning Commission? Is there anyone else? Think about, I'm not going to put you on the spot now, on who else you think would be very valuable to be there to be able to answer.
The Gaming Commission would be, that would be fantastic. I don't know if I necessarily, based on what we heard tonight, that, well, I guess PBPC could add to it. I mean, you know, they have some data, but I, I don't know. I, I just think, I think someone from the casinos and someone from the Gaming Commission would be really helpful to have there if they could, if they could make it.
All right, think about that, send ideas. And in the meantime, you know, please send me your doodle poll, I might need to resend it if we're going to be inviting. You didn't get it again?
No, I got it.
Oh, you did? You might have, not everybody did, yeah. And so we can try to get that set up. And in the meantime, we might need to resend that if for some reason the casinos are saying they need a, a different date. And so I will try to contact Hard Rock after Tuesday's vote and MGM and see who we can pull together, but please send me your other ideas.
Can I just say, have we tried contacting Hard Rock and asked them to negotiate with us to recognize the surrounding community?
Indirectly, indirectly. We contacted the host community, West Springfield.
Yeah.
And then we've also been in touch with their partner, the Biggie. I mean.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't send a letter to them?
No, we could send a letter to them. I mean, I requested to initiate contact, but I think you heard, they're, they're not talking to other communities until after their Tuesday vote.
You know, there's a, there's an advantage for having the other side go on the record.
I'm aware.
Well, then, then we should do it.
Well, Tuesday is tomorrow, so we will know if they're, if they're going to be in the area, in the area. Okay, let's move on to the nine-thirty agenda item, which is the DPW. And we had been talking before about hiring an operations facilities consultant. And they, Stephen sent out, I'm not sure if he got it from Richard, the Andover study. And I thought that was a fabulous study and had a great scope of work and I wanted to see how everyone felt about it. If there was something else, they wanted to see our consultant in putting, when we put together the RFP.
I, my, if I could lead off, I'd really like to hear from Richard. I mean, we had a vehicle study done at DPW and I think some of that may have been, and we talked about this before, Richard was on the board, that the writing of that may not have been in the, you know, things can be tweaked by the, by the same people who may be writing it. And I think we really need to define exactly what we're looking for and who, and who should and should not be involved in the process.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. The automobile study, to me, was skewed. And I voiced my concern before I was on the board and since I've been on the board on that. And we, we definitely want an independent study if we're going to go into, into a complex as large as DPW to rip it apart and look at every facet of it. And I think we need to be assured that it's a sanitized study and that it, that it's not proportioned off in any one given direction. And I don't know how to make sure that this thing does come back clean, other than we're going to do it through an excellent scope of work and possibly even have a committee that drives this thing through when we're talking about the reviews. Because Stephen's unaware, there was stipulations in the vehicle fleet study where this board was supposed to have been briefed and they never were briefed on the study. I mean, there was omissions in the entire process. And that leaves a sour taste because we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on a study and there was no input from this board on the study or questions on it or anything else. So, and we're going to, we're going to be, that scope that you sent out is a very good scope, it's going to need some modification to our needs. But I think above and beyond that, I think it needs to, it needs to fall on a lot of people's eyes to make sure this, this process is, is put through properly. Because there's, there's going to be, they're going to be looking at some tough areas. I mean, we're going to be asking them to look at organizational routines, the staffing levels, the equipment levels, decentralization of the facilities. And there's a lot of self-generated preservation-type interest in people that are working within our structure that may not want to see any change take place and that may stand in considerable opposition to that, which is normal. There's nothing wrong with it, but somehow we've got to make sure that this one is elevated up to a little higher level of, and I hate to say supervision, but I'd just say, what, quality control? And that's my feelings, Marie.
Was there anything in the, that was missing from the Andover study you would like to see in a scope of the upcoming evaluation?
Well, that's a big question, because that's a big study. Yeah, there.
Can I redirect just for a second?
Sure.
Yeah.
I did get the scope of work that they used to retain the consultant. The consultant is no longer in business.
Right.
So, right now, I did send it to our purchasing department, they're doing, they're folding the scope of work into our existing boilerplate. I can circulate that for review and comment by the select board and that's where the moment where you say, do we want to add something else to this? So why don't we hold off on that question until I circulate our draft scope of work for the study?
My only concern is when do you think that will be available?
I think Wednesday. I do want to say one thing on behalf of the organization, though. Obviously, we're under a tremendous amount of pressure with this kind of once-in-a-generation type issue with the casinos. We don't, I mean, we have two hundred employees, but they're not sitting around waiting for work.
Oh, no, I wasn't laughing.
And so everyone had, I mean, and I'm trying to make excuses, but I mean, we're, I'm happy to keep up, to try and keep the ball moving on a lot of these issues. But I think there needs to be some. ball moving on a lot of these issues, but I think there needs to be some realistic expectations because everyone already has a tremendous amount of work that they're doing, and this is all kind of added on. Every time we say, well, let's do this and let's do that, it's added on top of what they're already doing. And I just want to, we will get it done. I just want to make sure I'm not setting false expectations for when things can get done. I mean, things do take time to produce.
Oh, I understand that. And I'm always putting it on the agenda because I want to make sure we move our two main projects down. So when you tell me that, that's understandable. I was just looking at Richard when I was smiling.
Oh, yeah. And I would, I would, I think I'm agreeing with Stephen. It's far more important to get this study right and get the scope right than it is to get it done fast. Because, you know, we're dealing, we're talking, well, there's also the, when we're talking about bringing in that data system into our town too, and we talked tonight about a new financial-type system. So there's a lot of things that are starting to take place, and these are questions that we're going to want to be analyzed by the consultant. And these are things that are going to come into this decision. Are we set up to do this? Do we have the computers? Are we doing maintenance management systems? There's going to be a lot of points in that study. Because I think we're looking at a pretty, pretty heavy paradigm shift in how we do business in our community. And it's going to take a couple of years to bring it in, but I think there's a major change that's in the wind.
If I may reinforce the point, because you knew you worked in government for a long time, and it's, I've only been in it for 20 years, but I can tell you that there are very few moments, if any, that I can think of where right now was better than right when it came to doing something in public policy. So I just, I agree with you. That doesn't mean sit and wait. I know that, I understand that there's also a bureaucratic effect that can take hold. So I understand we want to get things going, but...
Well, Richard, I mean, Stephen, you don't have to worry. We'll probably be looking at October as our next time we're going to be looking at this, this RFP. Anything else you want to add?
Just a motion to adjourn.
Oh, gosh, I can't actually adjourn, unfortunately. Got to move on to...
Do you have LCTV video of facility in there too?
Oh, you do want us to skip that? I could skip that.
Just real quickly, I'm working with Dave Bartlett at LCTV, and Doug is actually helping out too. We're going to do kind of a five-to-eight-minute educational video about the facility and basically a video version of the tour everyone took to help it. Because we've talked at the last meeting about what a big commitment this is going to be by the whole community, and we really want to give people the opportunity to learn about the facility. So that's something that is in the offing right now. We're going to work on a script based really, almost entirely on the information that was relayed by both Mike Rabel and the gentleman from Tyne Bond, Ron...
McCowsky.
Yeah. That information really, like I said, concise, not a half-hour documentary, just five-to-eight minutes highlighting the information that you heard during the tour. So we are kind of in the initial stages of that. I want to thank LCTV for their willingness to partner with us.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the audit committee. Unfortunately, I spoke to our attorney, and he said that you must be a voting member, resident even as a associate member. And so I wanted to bring up two points, is we really need people to please come forward and volunteer. According to our attorney, we need three members of the committee for, to be working committee, and right now, we have two. We need three for a quorum. And I would like to also, I really appreciate Joe Rinaldi coming forward. I'd like us to consider putting student liaisons to committees and boards. So if students want to become involved with committees, they can become involved with committees as liaisons, like they do with the school committee. Wanted to know how this board felt about offering liaison position.
I wouldn't favor it. I see what the person does on the school committee, and you want to have a liaison where they sit in a crowd, that's fine. To have a seat at this table, absolutely not.
Okay.
They're given more, actually, in the school committee, they're given more access to the school committee than a citizen is. A citizen can only speak during visitor comments. That liaison can speak at any point in time during a meeting. And I think that's wrong to the citizens of this community, that just because they're a student, and I have a son in high school, just because they're a student doesn't mean they should have more accessibility to a board than a citizen does.
Mark, do you have an opinion on it?
Now that you've asked, with the danger of being politically incorrect, I don't think that we would want to be placing students on our committees. They're more than welcome to attend the public hearings, but in terms of participation, we have a forum at almost every public meeting that allows people to state their opinions. And I think that we ought to use that for people who want input.
Alex?
I mean, I guess, I actually see the logic of having a student liaison for the school committee. I mean, you've got somebody who's talking about the impact of what the school committee's doing because they're going to school. I guess it's less compelling for these other committees and boards, but on the other hand, I don't see any great harm in it. So I guess that's where I am on it.
Richard, any comments?
Just a combination of everything's been expressed. I think there's some committees and boards where it would be highly inappropriate, but I think there are some possible opportunities where students could be an associate member in some of the committees, but certainly not on any of the committees that are appointed or that are elected. I think, or now, excuse me, I didn't mean to point at any of the charter-type committees. I think some of the other, there's likely some avenues on some of the others, but I think Alex is right. They do fit very well on the school committee because that's pertinent to their, to the environment you're in with the student body and all.
Well, I'd like to see more involvement of the students. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I think any committee should, they would be able to add to it. And I don't think they're very quiet, especially, my understanding of Joe Rinaldi is really adding things to the school committee. So I was hoping to get more student liaisons and involvement with committees and boards, and it's a way of also encouraging volunteerism and involvement in our town and bringing it together. But if there's no motion on the floor, well, we'll pass that topic. Any motion? No?
I think it needs to be refined before a motion can be put, Marie.
And Marie, I would open it up and have, open it up to the students that come in and sit down in the room where the meetings are being held and see if there's interest first. Because I really have a problem with allowing someone who is, where you give more access just because of their age, because they're a student, because if the school committee really wanted input, there'd be student representatives from each of the school, and there's not. There's only from the high school. And there's a reason for it. They don't want to have a third grader perhaps sitting in their meetings talking about what they liked for lunch or whatever. So I really think that, you know, getting student involvement is fine. Tell them to come to the meetings and sit down and listen for a while. Because the reality is that by appointing them to a board, even as a liaison, you are giving them more access than what a citizen does, than what a normal citizen from the town of Long Meadow gets. And I think that's wrong. It doesn't promote activism. You'll get a group of people who want to do it, just like a group of people who come out and want to serve on the boards. I have no problem with them attending meetings, asking questions, that's open to anybody, voting age or not. And they should come. But I don't see them here, I've never seen them here, I've never seen them at a finance committee meeting. So I would think that the first thing to do is open it up and see if there is interest besides a handful of kids, and whether or not it fits with a committee. I think there's some that are making financial decisions for the town that really should be focusing on what they're doing and not worrying about whether a liaison wants to add input to that. I just, I, you know, it's, I don't believe it enhances the board that you would put them on. I don't think it would enhance this board to have a student liaison.
Well, it goes back then to equal opportunity of all residents, so please, well, residents, we'd love to have you volunteer for the audit committee. We do have a student who has come forward, and right now, there is not a student liaison possibility, but please come forward. The audit committee is very important to this town, and we're getting ready for the audit process to begin. And right now, we don't have a working audit committee. Thank you. So let's move on to the next business, which is the open meeting law violation. And I did a writing of a response, and I was told by the town manager I had to hand this out at the meeting. I could not send it ahead of time because that would be a violation of open meeting law. You want to hand that down to Stephen also? And here's another one. And we have to give a response within 14 days, and so what...
Where is that? No, I mean, like, what's the, what procedure are you referring to?
The procedure is, once you receive a complaint, you have to respond within 14 days as a body.
Attorney general's procedure is.
Yeah? And I have a copy of the open meeting law violation guide, and I'll be glad to give that to you. Everyone should have had the alleged violation complaint that was filed. This is my response, and I think as a board, we have to agree to what the response was going to be. Now, which makes this difficult is because this is just like my first draft. Everyone else has a right to say what changes they want to it, and then we have to file the response. So we can meet again next week, and you can give me your alterations or changes to the response. And we still, will we be within the 14 days? Because it was the 30-day, 31st...
It was August 30th.
August 30th. And the next time we meet is the 16th. So it won't be within the time period.
14 working days or 14 calendar?
Let me see. Has 14 business days, very good, from the date of receipt. So next Monday, you can give me your alterations and changes to that, and then I can get that And if you go to the open meeting law guide, you'll be able to see all the details and descriptions of what can be considered and...
I'm sorry, where is it? Oh, is it on the...
Yeah, it's MassGOV slash BGO.
I guess the reason I was asking is because when I read the complaint, I actually didn't hear any, there was no articulation of a violation. All I heard was that Mr. Santinella indicated that a conversation had taken place.
Did you get the copy of this?
I did, but, I mean, but I mean, at no point does he indicate that there was deliberation that took place, or, all I heard was a conversation. Factually, all that was stated was there was a conversation.
Of three select board members with the town manager about an item that was discussed in executive session, correct?
Sorry, is that what it said? All I saw was there was a conversation.
Yeah, and that's all that needs to be listed.
That there was a conversation. I mean, because the point, I guess, the reason I was a little perplexed by it, because, you know, I know that there've probably been occasions, me coming on the board where three select board members were having a conversation of some sort. I never thought to jump to the conclusion that there was open meeting violation. So I assumed that there would be something factual behind it before there would be a response.
Well, I think the only thing we need to do at this point in time is to respond. And so why don't you review the written response and any corrections or changes, and we'll file that in. All right. So the reason I was pushing to not close meetings is so we can get that done. I didn't want to miss the deadline date. All right, now, the next thing is, there's minutes, and I do have to thank Alex Grant. It was not easy to do because we were a wild group that night, but I appreciate the minutes. Any, is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes? Or any corrections?
Well, we can discuss corrections. I have, I made, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I had, you know, some of these things were, someone, there was one in particular, I'm just waiting for it to come up, and I left my printed copy at home where it said that...
Oh, I haven't. Here's a printed copy right here, if that helps.
No, I got it right now, okay. Where is it? There were things that were discussed that is almost stated as if they were facts, and, you know, we said, there's something here that a goal, that I said that a goal concern in OPEB would impact union contracts. Well, I don't know if I said it quite like that, because we didn't decide on what the goal was for OPEB, for example. We were having a discussion, and I don't know if that's pertinent, for example, that was said in, to a degree, that if we talk about reducing salaries or staffing, that that would have an effect on OPEB. But other than that, I mean, I think there was a lot that was floating around, so I don't think that, I don't think they're inaccurate. I think that they, some of the, how it's worded might be a little bit different.
And so, any specific corrections? No?
No.
Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's great. I wanted to bring up the minutes, in that I understand not all towns go into this detail on verbatim minutes. And I know it's very, very difficult for us to find someone to, are we, does, and what are people's feelings about going to, what motion was filed, what the decisions were, a general description of what the discussion is, rather than actual quoting of people throughout minutes?
You were on the board, and we talked about this in terms of shoring them up. We looked at other communities and their minutes, and I believe, and correct me because I could be wrong, is that our council said that's what we had to capture in minutes.
Now that we have a video, I don't know.
Well, he did say, when we did, I mean, I'll just go back to the session at Greenwood. And he did say, it does not need to be a transcript of the deliberations, it just needs to be a recording of the proceedings. And so I think there's a balancing act between, a line, if you will, between a very detailed single space, you know, I commend, it is tough to take minutes. I commend your effort there, I really do.
I think I noted that was my last...
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we could probably have Kim and Debbie testify to the challenge of taking minutes. But there's a line between a full transcript and just the, a motion was made, seconded by such-and-such, voted, and a brief discussion was had about the issue.
Yeah.
You know, that may not be satisfactory enough. I do agree that with LCTV having, you know, being able to access past meetings, you know, on YouTube, but if, you know, you don't have an internet connection or high-speed internet connection, you rely on the minutes for information, that doesn't help you. You know, I guess it really, we are going to, I think, try and find somebody else to take minutes because the planning board has the same issue. I know that we discussed in the past that there was something, we felt there was some value to have someone who's a non-town employee do the minutes and kind of, you know, like Kim was really contractor essentially brought in to do the minutes. If the select board wants to stick with that model, we can advertise for both the planning board and the select board, and then have that person, if they don't already, if they work for another town, we can make sure that they talk to Dave Martell, our attorney, to say, here's the flavor we want, and get that person, you know, I guess largely through guidance upfront and then feedback during future meetings.
Mark?
I'm a strong believer that the minutes represent a historical record of what took place. I've already seen in my short tenure on the select board the need to go back and look at the minutes to see what was said, particularly in things like executive session, but also in open meetings. You know, I don't believe that the video is a legal, or legal substitution for the minutes. And so the minutes, to me, represent two things. One is a record of what was said, so you can go back a week, a month, and six months. But there's also, to me, a historical perspective of somebody going back five years and what was said on a topic that may have come up. So I prefer a more detailed rather than less detailed set of minutes.
Any other comments? I think having detailed, it's very partial, who gets quoted, how often they get quoted. And so I don't consider it a great historical record. I think that I would prefer making it a lot easier on everyone, but I don't have consensus on the board. People do review the tapes, and now it's going to be Youtubed, and it's an automatic that people at any point in time can review and go to what actually was said by who. But we'll move along and we'll make any changes at this time in the minutes. Any select board comments before we close the meeting? Our town manager report?
I would say, since I have reported on the past, and I'll get a report on it while I was sitting here, did get an email from the engineering department. There was, there is a gas main leak on Hurryweather resulting from construction activities. Columbia Gas is on scene, and I think it started excavating around. It's a similar type situation with the flange and the valve and everything else. So if you see crews out there tonight, it's Columbia Gas monitoring it.
I was actually going to ask about that because on my way driving over here, I saw two police cars down there, and they had the road closed.
One last thing, is I did give everyone the list of goals that I felt was a transcript of what everyone said. Please review it. If there are any changes or alterations in what we gathered together, let me know, and I'll change the chart as we move forward. Okay, thank you very much.
I have one more thing. Yeah, I'd like to get it out for the record. If we're going to continue having large documents be transmitted down through our mail system, there's a work order into the technical people to find out why these iPads won't work with that. And I don't know whether we got a glitch or it's our process, but I would like to see that pushed forward. The iPad is a very nice tool for me, and everybody else likes the laptops, but I had I had the laptop locking up on me all the time in here and this hasn't locked up once and I just can't download the data.
Stephen, can you put a ticket in?
He did.
Oh, you did.
The ticket is in. I just, I just would like to make sure that we, that one pushes through because these